All right, we have been in closed session. We have motion to go into open session. The motion by Commissioner Foster, is there a second? Second by Vice Chair Belcher, is there any discussion about our motion to go back into open session? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. That motion is adopted by seven to zero vote. We now, we have a scheduled retreat here in open session. Is there a motion to adjourn this special meeting that was called yesterday, I believe? The motion by Vice Chair Belcher, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Foster, is there any discussion of the motion to adjourn this special call that consisted of a closed session? If not a called question, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Then that, we are out of session and we're back to our retreat by seven to zero vote.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, we really do appreciate you taking the time today. There's, we're gonna, we have basically three topics on the agenda. We wanted to address the basics and the fundamentals and direction on where we go from here on issues related to zoning land use, our housing programs, and then just an update from maybe mental health and then address the center of how we're progressing with those. So, we're gonna go first with the zoning department and the zoning issues.
Mr. Chairman, Warman?
Um, we're just starting. We're just starting.
Do you mind if I do that?
Yeah. Oh.
Let's just watch.
Are the bagels worth the calories?
Oh, yeah. No, I had.
You really?
Yeah, don't get the gray bread like you wanna wear, it's infection. I was eating that this morning, it got in my business, I guess. And I'm looking around, it's a clothing. It's everywhere, dude. Like, clothes up all over. All right. Okay. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Warman, we're just kinda gotta go through the aspects of zoning this morning. Just wanna talk about the zoning districts and types, the overlays, additional uses in the OU, areas that have restrictions in the county, boards and their duties, land use plan, building permits, and then possible actions. I understand that one to send that information on that slide to y'all at the time, so. Just thought I'd, just talking about zoning districts. When you look at it, we have five residential districts and six commercials. This is a picture of the county, obviously. The light gray area is open use. The dark gray areas are the municipalities, sixteen municipalities, and then the different colors are the areas that are mostly residential, but those are commercial, commercial uses also. When you look at the green and the yellow, that's mostly residential. Obviously, the area and the colors have a lot more impact and they have utilities, so there's a lot more on where the OU district has a lot less, simply because it doesn't have those pressures that you see in the regulated area. If you look real close, there's areas like right here, the door, there's holes there, there's holes there, those are what we call domed nuts. Those were, those were when municipalities started to annex, when they had bad description, they didn't pick up all of it, they thought that they were gonna pick up. There are areas before last year, the general statutes were changed, the counties could not come in and zone anything less than a square mile. So, that left holes. I think a prime example was over by UNCA three years ago, there was a long debate about apartment complex coming in after student housing, neighborhood there, and neither Asheville or us or Wiltshire could do anything about it. So, I'll talk a little bit about those at the end, but I just wanted to bring this up on the shoulders to you. Next is overlay districts. We have three overlays. We have first the Blue Ridge Parkway, which is basically a quarter mile on each side of the Parkway. This kind of leads over to, like I said, there's three different overlays here. There's the Blue Ridge Parkway, and then we've got the steep slopes and the protected ridge. The Parkway comes down through here, and it's in a, in this area, it's in the protected ridge overlay. Then it comes on down through here, comes down into South Palm, maybe the falls, and on outside the county. We regulate, like I said, a quarter mile from basically the center line of the Parkway. In the steep slope area, which is in the kind of Aqua Green area, is that we regulate anything that's 2,500 feet in elevation and 35% slope. And then when you look at the overlay, the protected ridge overlay, which is the areas that are in yellow there, those are areas that are at least 3,000 feet in elevation and 500 feet off the valley floor. We regulate 500 feet on each side of the slope of the ridgeline. As I mentioned before, we have five residential districts, and I won't read these, but we have R1, RLD, and then BDM, which is Beaver Dam, and that's to Beaver Dam that is in North Asheville. They all allow single-family development only. R2 and R3 allow multifamily development, and then R3 and RLD allow manufactured houses. In the five commercial, or the six commercial districts, we have a neighborhood service and commercial service. Neighborhood service is just like it says, it's like cleaners, something that would support, you could have them at with a convenience store, something like that. Where commercial service is more intense, like you'd see on Airport Road, those kind of uses like Tardor or whatever. We have employment, which obviously is intended for employment concentrations and also office and warehouse. And public service, which is schools and universities and public properties. We have the conference resort, which is large religious retreats and conference centers and resorts like the Delmore State or the Cove or Ridge Crest. And then we have the AL, which is airport industrial. All these allow for single-family residential uses, with the exception of like the airport. And only employment allow for manufactured house. In the open use district, I usually call them the dirty dozen, but they're really sixteen uses that are conditional. You can see where majority of these wood, would cause problems if they landed in the county. If you got into a concrete plant, mining operations, most sports parks. So, we have conditions on those that they'll have to go through the board of adjustments. And like I say, in the OU, you don't have that kind of pressure that we do in the areas where we have the MSD sewer district, where you have utilities. So, we're gonna turn it over to Debbie and let her comment a little bit about the overlay.
Thanks. As John went over on the previous slide, we have three overlay districts. They increase regulation of development in those areas, and they also reduce the allowed uses that are permitted in that area from what is normally permitted in the underlying zoning district. For the Blue Ridge Parkway overlay, which is a quarter mile on the side of the center line of the Parkway, it has setback and buffer requirements for development that is just adjacent to the Blue Ridge Parkway boundary. And it also has a maximum building height of 40 feet for the entire half-mile strip that goes down through the county's jurisdiction, although all of our residential zoning districts do have a lesser maximum height of 35 feet, so that's not affected. In the steep slope high elevation overlay district, which were those Aqua areas in the slide that John went over, and those areas are at least 25 feet and 2,500 feet in elevation and 35% slope, it reduces the permitted uses. And for any new lots that are subdivided, they have to be at least an acre and a half. And for lots less than two acres, there's a maximum disturbed area of .3 acres and a maximum impervious acre area of .16 acres. And then there's percentages for any lot that's over two acres that are allowed for those disturbance impervious areas. We do give a credit for folks that retain mature trees during development. We encourage that, it keeps the site more stable. So, even though screening trees are required, we give credit for mature trees. So, in most cases, people don't have to do any more plantings, they just take those trees during construction, make sure they stay.
Debbie, is that ineffective? Or have you found that people just don't care, they knock out all the trees?
They really do keep those mature trees. It's just an extra expense to have to go in and replant them. And a lot of people, you know, they wanna keep some trees around their site anyhow. So, and it's, it has enough leeway so that people can still have some views through sort of tunnels between the trees. So, folks don't seem to be as interested in just cutting everything down in front of the house.
Question. How did we come up with 2,500 feet?
2,500 feet, when we looked at slope stability, we saw that at 2,500 feet, that was really where problems started taking place, and.
But right now, you're setting, well, let's say, Valley, Valley's 2,130 feet, so you're only looking at 300 more feet. So, you look out the window here, that's all steep slopes, you're looking at 700 feet. That's 2,500 feet. The top of the hill in Perry is 2,500 feet. So, you know, the development I live in, there's areas in it's 2,500 feet, I own 2,500 feet. So, that's, that's a number that's hard to totally accept, because if you look out the windows, and it wasn't blocked, you got up to 700, it's 2,500 feet. Because the natural starts 2,100.
It's 2,100 feet and at least 35% slope. So, it's not just everything that's on 2,500.
Okay. It's the 35% slope.
And that's where, like Debbie said, you're starting to unstable, if you look at the slopes, the stability maps, that's where you really start seeing those moderate severe type movements that can happen. And that's why we have a geoengineer on the site to make sure that, one, they can tell the builder what's going on, what they need to do to stabilize the site, and then we can accomplish that afterwards and make sure that it was done correctly.
Now, move on to Protected Ridge Overlay District. That is the strip that showed in the gold color in the slide. That is protected mountain ridges that are at least 3,000 feet in elevation and at least 500 feet above the adjacent valley floor, and extends 500 horizontal feet on either side of the ridgeline. The permitted uses there are even more restricted to single-family development, vacation rentals, churches, utility stations, and recreation. In that Protected Ridge Overlay District, we do have a minimum lot size of two acres and also a 200-foot minimum lot width. And that is in order to space development out, keep more mature growth in between those development sites. Again, it's very important for slope stabilization. It also keeps people from going up to a ridge and just carving out skinny strips and then just lining the houses up right at the top.
Let me interrupt, and let me get a feel for the floor, how we proceed. Y'all want to have the whole presentation on the sun and then go back and talk about things you'd want to change, or you'd like them to look at more, or do you want to do it as we go? My recommendation would be let them give their presentation, at the end of it, come back and say, "Well, I'd like to see this," or "Want to fill a void on this." But I didn't probably, I forgot to do that when we started. What's the pleasure of the board? Actually, just do that, let them give their presentation, then go back and say, "Well, I wanna look more at this, and I wanna consider this." Okay, is everybody good with that? Yeah? Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. The Protected Ridge Overlay District also has a maximum building height of 25 feet. If the structure is located at least 50 vertical feet below the ridgeline, it does go up to a maximum height of 35 feet. And as with steep slope high elevation overlay, there are limits on disturbance and impervious cover. Again, screening trees are required, but we encourage the keeping of existing trees and geotechnical reports on anything that's built on 35% slope or in the moderate high hazard slope stability areas. We require the geotechnical report prior to construction. They do the investigation as to how stable the site is, what techniques need to be used to make sure it's a stable site. And then post-construction, we require that report that says, "My recommendations, I've been to the site enough and inspected to see that my recommendations were followed," or "Site conditions, once construction started, turned out to be different and these techniques were used instead."
So, have you had any problems, any site failures with the geotechnical report? Did we have that as a requirement?
I had two that I know of, not necessarily failures, but there was some miscommunication between the builder and the engineer, and the builder did not follow the original recommendations. And so, the remedy for that was that the builder had to go back and do after-the-fact mitigations in order to make the site compliant, other than revise set of geotechnical findings.
Okay. So, nobody's been left in lurch, if they had a situation, that they, their property fell down the mountain, or didn't stay stable, there's been a remedy for them since you had this?
Yeah, we've not had any actual, with the sites that were permitted in steep slope and protected ridge, we've not had any failures in terms of slope slippage or anything physical that was reported on us. Most of the failures come during the inspection process, and we have a remedy to withhold the CO or the certificate of occupancy on the house until we're comfortable that the professionals that have assessed the site have a reasonable level of assurance that safety's been provided on the site.
And Josh will proceed with some other questions that are in the panel.
I'm gonna stand up, so I'll go around and get somebody, I don't wanna try and stack the things. The maps that John started off with that show the zoning districts, what we've done is we've combined everything there, and I wanted to kinda answer one of the questions that we get into a lot in commission meetings, which is, "How much of the county is zoned open use?" So, if you look at this map, this blue color right here surrounding the municipal areas, which are highlighted great, that's the areas that are conventional MSD-based zoning districts. So, R1, R2, R3, CS, EMP, everything but open use. So, you can see, that's just an area around the periphery of the city. Everything outside of the municipal areas and these MSD-zoned areas is within the open use district. So, you've often heard the figure that 80% of the county is zoned open use, which is true. But then when you look at the additional regulations that apply to open use, you see that that area is much further restricted. So, let's see where to start. So, these orange areas, those are the steep slope and protected ridge areas that John had previously talked about. You see that some of that does come into the municipally, or into the MSD zoning areas, and you also see that it's overlapped by additional restrictions. Trying to find one that's a little bit clearer. It's kinda yellowish, greenish-yellow color. Those are existing conservation and public lands. So, if you look, there's quite a number of those in the county. And again, some of those are additionally constrained by steep slope and protected ridge areas. And then up in the north section of the county, along Big Ivy, we've got the watershed water supply area, which is an additional level of restrictions that come down from the state, has limitations on minimum lot size and distance from streams. So, really, when you're talking about open use and zoning restrictions, it's these white areas that are just pure open use zoning. And what I would add to that is, you see, we've got several water bodies. So, outside of the regulations that are imposed by the zoning ordinance itself, there are also additional regulations associated with the flood damage prevention ordinance, which make changes in some of those low-lying areas, like you have here, up along Big Ivy, up along Turkey Creek area, that, there are additional restrictions there, even though the property is in open use. So, when we say 80% of the county is zoned open use, you also have to keep in mind the impact of zoning overlays and additional restrictions that can come through other ordinances.
Josh, have you done the math on that to see what's left?
No. What causes the problem is this orange area, it creates such little pockets that trying to do the math, you don't really get a good number. It's kinda pushing the limits of what we can do with GIS. We've attempted to, and the problem with the steep slope and protected ridge, is it's so small in some areas that there might be an open use piece of property that has portions that is open use and portions that's open use with those overlays. So, we don't have a clean number of.
The first slide you did would be the one to compare, compare with, I think, not that you did, but that y'all supplied, would be the one to compare, the one to side-by-side, these two, just the traditional.
You mean that, the gray one?
Yeah, because that, that's the one that does not put any of this into, so you could set those two side by side, and you could just speculate from that, whatever, you know, fault you might have on how it affects it, but it's a good slide.
And a little bit later in the presentation, we'll also look at how this creates some impacts for where building is occurring within the county now. So, the next thing, we kinda might have to take a leap and go over the roles of planning boards as it pertains to land use regulations and how that impacts the decisions that you make for the board. So, I've got this broken down by major decision types, and I think the three that y'all probably hear the most about are rezonings, tax amendments, and you hear a lot about major subdivisions, and there's always the question about what your role is in each of these decisions. So, starting out with rezonings, the way that those originate is we receive an application for a rezoning. We review that, we look at the land use plan and the technical information that we have about the application, and we come up with a staff recommendation that's rooted in the land use plan. We then set a hearing date for the planning board and forward that recommendation to the planning board. The planning board will hold the first public hearing on the rezoning application. They, their conversation will be informed by the staff recommendation, but they're not bound to follow it. They'll receive information from the public, and then they will make a recommendation that's reflective of the staff, the staff recommendation and whatever information they received during that, that public hearing. That information will be forwarded to y'all. Y'all will set a public hearing date, and the same process will occur again. And at that point, a final decision will be made to either support the rezoning or to deny the rezoning. Rezonings, technically speaking, are referred to as map amendments, just an amendment to the map that's tied to the zoning ordinance. So, in that light, tax amendments follow the same exact map. The only difference there is that a lot of times, staff is the one that originates tax amendments, and that comes from conversations like we're having here today, comes from the revisions that we've done to the land use plan. So, that, that process is a little bit more autonomous, we're not waiting for applications to come to us. And then the third type of decision, and these are the ones that are reviewed by the planning board, is major subdivisions, and that's any development that creates more than 11 lots within Buncombe County. Staff reviews that application, we review it per the land ordinances. We add any staff recommended conditions, so if there's something that's not clearing the application, there's something they need to add to the plans that they presented. We present that to the planning board in a letter, and then the planning board reviews that application only for adherence to the ordinance. So, it's not a subjective process, it's an administrative approval, and I'll go into that in more detail in a minute. But it's only per what the ordinance directs. With that, we go to board of adjustments. Board of adjustment does two major types of hearings. The first type is conditional use permit, and a conditional use permit, generally speaking, is any building over 35,000 square feet. There's an entire list of uses that are conditional uses that are perhaps a little bit more intense. Something like an apartment complex is usually a conditional use. More than one, or more than two buildings on a single piece of property. That undergoes a staff analysis and review prior to a board of adjustment hearing being set, and the board of adjustment will set a hearing date. This is a quasi-judicial process, so the hearing process is all evidence-based. It's not a time for general public comment, but the public comes in and offers testimony and evidence similar to what they would offer during court. The same thing with variances from the zoning ordinance. A variance from the zoning ordinance is when you have a piece of property, you look at the rules, and you run into some kind of conflict with how the property is to be developed and what the ordinance says. It's not a venue to get the rules relaxed just because you want them, but basically, there's something so unique on a particular piece of property that the property couldn't otherwise be developed without some flexibility in the rules. One of the important things with a variance is variances cannot allow for a use outside of what's allowed in the zoning district at hand. It can only vary things like the maximum height, minimum lot size, things of that nature. But just because you're in an R3 district, we couldn't allow you to have a retail store because there was a retail store next door. The proper venue for that is a rezoning. So, it undergoes the same process, it goes to a staff analysis or review, the board of adjustment will set a hearing, and that hearing will undergo the same quasi-judicial format. Excellent. So, I've taken each of these decisions and kinda bulked them out so you can see which category they fall under. So, rezonings and tax amendments, those are legislative decisions, so that's just like any other amendments to an ordinance that you might make. The public can call you, you can communicate about that, it's completely open process, and it's less constrained by, I guess, any governing documents. It should be informed by the land use plan, but your ability to consider information is very broad. You can consider pretty much anything the public comes to you with during the public hearing or outside of the public hearing. Major subdivisions are a purely administrative process, so while we will often allow for public comment, the board is looking for adherence to the ordinance only. So, there might be an opportunity for someone to bring something to the planning board and say, "I reviewed the plan," and it doesn't meet this aspect of the ordinance. But with administrative ordinances, there's no requirement that that be done. It's just a more detailed level of review in front of the planning board. And then with the quasi-judicial process for conditional use permits and variances in front of the board of adjustment, it's a very constrained process. The board members that sit on the board of adjustment are not allowed to communicate about those decisions beforehand. They don't receive information about the case until the day of the hearing, and the evidence provided has to be similar to the quality of evidence that you would see in a court of law. So, somebody can't come in and say, "I don't like this development next door to me." They have to show how that development either doesn't meet the ordinances or how it would impact them in some specific way. And I hit on this briefly, but with the 2013 decisions to land use plan, one of the things we tried to do is make sure that the bulk of our decisions considered the land use plan and the way that we wanted to see development move forward in Buncombe County. So, that's always been the case with legislative decisions, that's why I'm always bothering y'all to make a second motion that says, "We find this in conformance with the land use plan, and that's why we present your documents to detail the land use plan." And now with conditional use permits, that's something that we've recently added to the ordinance, so that when the board of adjustment looks at an application, it can look at some of the maps that Debbie and John are gonna review. of the maps that Debbie and John are going to review in just a moment, and, and see how it fits with the county's overall plans for growth in the future.
So Josh, if I could just underline, so the bodies that made these decisions, be it the planning board, or board of commissioners, or the board of adjustments, the criteria they are supposed to, the only criteria they're supposed to utilize in that determination is the land use plan?
It's not the only, with the legislative decisions, it's not the only criteria. You have a pretty broad license. You have to make a finding of whether or not it adheres to the land use plan, but legally there's no requirement that it does adhere to the land use plan. You can say, "We don't think this adheres to the land use plan," and then turn around and just kind of pass it anyway. There's no legal requirement, but, but clearly it's, it's better decision-making. If you show that it, it conforms to the land use plan, or in the case that it does not, you, you make that, you spell that out very clearly, and show that you think it's a problem with land use plan, it's something you need to go back and update. I mean, that's a problem that you could run to, run into, as we, as the land use plan suggests is the topic. But you can also look at particular impacts on a neighborhood, things that may be a little bit more narrow than the land use plan.
Okay, so I'm going to go over a piece of, about our land use plan. As Josh said, it's very important in, in decision-making of all three boards that we work with. And the planning board and board of commissioners by statute are required to adopt a statement, whether it's a proposed zoning or tax amendment is consistent or not consistent with the land use plan. The county's comprehensive land use plan was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight. There were a lot of growth-related issues going on at the time, and that's what prompted the plan being done at that point. That plan, the nineteen ninety-eight plan, had recommendations that concentrated on infrastructure, economic development, and the environment. The, the plan was updated in two thousand and six, and that plan actually went a step further and recommended county wide zoning. It recommended, we already had existing zoning in limestone township in the Redding Valley, and it recommended the limestone type zoning in the MSD service district only, and then open use zoning in the remainder of the county's jurisdiction. The two thousand thirteen update provided more concrete recommendations for land use decisions. So this is hardly as I know, but this is a table that is in the two thousand thirteen land use plan update. This is appropriate development types, and it provides guidance in considering whether a specific piece of property is suitable for a specific proposed type of development. So it evaluates different types of development in your growth, you've got residential, commercial, industrial, and different intensities within those types of development. And it compares them against seven characteristics, which are shown in the columns, and rates those characteristics as not required, as the dash suggested, which is the thumbs up, or highly suggested, which is the star. And that'd be for each type of development. So as an example, if we've got an application to rezonate a piece of property from R1, single family, to commercial service, we would look at that property for the seven characteristics: proximity to transportation corridors, public utilities, steep slopes, high elevations, slope stability hazards, flood hazards, and proximity to low-density residential uses. So this chart suggests that single-family development be within reasonable proximity to transportation corridors and public utilities, and be outside steep slopes, flood hazards, and high elevations. But it highly suggests that commercial development have these characteristics. And it also highly suggests that commercial development be separated from low-density residential uses. So you can use this to evaluate a specific site, and then this land use plan update recommends which type of development would be more appropriate for that specific.
Debbie, is there another chart that developers or builders would use where it's a man, has the mandated line on it also?
I'm sorry, which?
Is there another chart? I mean, I think this is correct, because you want to, we don't want people buying land and, and not being able to do what they want to and find out at the bottom of the nine hundred pounds, and just spend a lot of money on it. That's a common complaint I have. So is there another chart? This, this is suggested things, that has, has another line that's mandatory. You have to do these things, you don't have a choice.
That's.
That, I'm sorry, that would just be your zoning districts that mandate exactly what types of, of development could take place.
I love this, but, but I would say, I mean, there's a way to do it without making it super complicated to add, "You have to do these things, you don't have a choice." Or, or are these, I, I don't know if they're, if they're mandated anywhere, but, but I just, I just hate the idea that, and this might be getting into a louder section, I said it, we played on, but I, I do hear that complaint a lot, and I think it's, for us to give people things upfront, okay, this is what you can and can't do based on our rules, including the mandatory things you have to do, is useful. I didn't know if you had another one of these that had, you gotta be just.
We've got all these things mapped out, which might help, and I'll explain those next. But these are not mandated, and there are some greater, because you'll have a piece of property that has some things that are highly suggested for commercial, and some things that are highly suggested for residential. So it's, it's not necessarily this property, you can't do those things. It may be that this area of your property is more suitable for those things than another area of your property. So I, I think that'll be more clear when I go over the map.
Okay, just to jump in real fast, if you look at the zoning ordinance, when you're talking mandatory, we have a permitted use table, which is what's allowed in R1 and R2, R3. We also have the overlays, which goes on top of that permitted use table, and it's got the same things, but it says, "This is what it's reduced to in this overlay." So that's the mandatory part that you're talking about. This chart is used as a decision-making tool to guide boards when you're making a, a decision. So this isn't something that, you know, you buy a piece of property, and you're looking at building a house or a small commercial structure. This is that you're engaging in a pretty intense level of development, when we start getting into suggested, and so Debbie's next.
Or rezoning.
Yeah, or rezoning. Debbie's next slide, we'll get into this, but we're, this is where we're looking for you to provide us a plan that shows the context of a piece of property. So this is not your standard development paradigm, this is something above and beyond everyday development, something that, that requires a little more forethought.
Okay. Thank you. And all of those seven columns that I went through are mapped, and this is hard to, to read, but it's, it just shows you that we've got it all mapped out, and it's on the GIS. So any applicant can assess this and look at their property's potential for a particular type of development, and they can also use it to include these items in their applications. And just to go through, the red parts are greater than twenty-five percent slope. Dark purple and white purple are high and moderate solubility hazards. Yellows are higher than twenty-five hundred feet in elevation. Pink is your combined public water and sewer service area. Beige is your major transportation corridors. The blue dotted are flood hazard areas, and then the dark red are your six incorporated areas.
On the flooding, didn't we, back a few years ago, when we had the back-to-back tropical storms, and five-hundred-year also people were entering, that there was areas flooding that had flooded in, over a hundred? And so, did we become more restrictive after that? Did we not go into a five-hundred-year floodplain, you know, when we were at Hayway and what people come from, and so on? Did that not change?
The flood ordinance didn't, didn't change at that point, and there still are not restrictions as far as development in the five-hundred-year floodplain. We like to let people know that development is, when they propose a development, that's in the, the regulations of flood ordinance of one to a hundred-year floodplain and floodway. But the state remapped the area in, what, in two thousand nine?
Yeah, right up to what I said. We really don't have any controls over that. I mean, those are done by FEMA, and basically come to us and say, "Okay, this is, we're going to determine what those flood areas are."
But that was, you know, two thousand nine's a recent, I mean, that's a recent change.
But those remappings did look at those areas that flooded and created floods. That's information they always want to get from us.
The, the maps that we have now, I mean, ORA always saw a net contraction of the floodplain because the maps prior to the, the latest revision were just, "Here's the stream, we think it floods this much, here's X number of feet from the stream," didn't take into account, you know, how deep is that stream channel, what's the topography like. So the maps that we have now use elevation models. So it, it contracts and expands along with the depth of the stream channel and how far the, the stream is. So these are much better maps that we're looking at now. They're never going to be a hundred percent accurate because the hundred percent, the hundred-year floodplain is just a probability, saying, out of any one year, there's a, you know, a one percent chance that the, the piece of property is going to flood. But occasionally, you are going to have events where it gets into the five-hundred-year floodplain.
We, we were, I guess, when those were being developed, and we, we had the initial maps, we had, we had Fran and another one come through right then, and it allowed, especially since then, the building department went out and said, "Okay, today, this is where the water is sitting." There was a lot of areas that we were able to go back to the state and say, "Hold on, you know, this is how far it did flood." So we had some difficulty.
I'm going to go over this, which is just an enlargement of the area that the previous map we looked at. And you can see how the, these three sites that are located close together have properties that have different characteristics and are suited for different types of development. The most southern part property has steep slopes and high elevations, which are shown in red and yellow, and it's not close to a transportation corridor or public utilities, which are in the beige and pink areas. The land use plan update shows that this property would be more suitable for low-density residential development than more intense development. Then these two northern properties are both outside steep slopes and high elevations, but they do have some key differences. The northeastern property is in close proximity to public utilities, which is the pink area, but is not in close proximity to the transportation corridor, which is the beige. The land use plan update shows that it would be less suited for intense development. When you look at the northwestern property, it's in close proximity to both public utilities and a transportation corridor, but also has areas in a hundred-year floodplain, which is a blue dotted area. The land use plan shows that it would be more suited for intense development, provided that that development is located outside that flood hazard area. Staff looks at this type of analysis for rezoning applications, and when we make our recommendations, they're based on this information. And that's why when we make our reports to you, we say, "This, this area is, is transportation corridor in this map, and the land use plan recommends this type of development with properties that have these types of characteristics."
It's just, I have a question. Go back to the flood issue. The map's kind of hard to read, and what's the five-hundred-year versus the one-hundred-year A and A E? So I'm not sure, I might have to just look at this a little bit and assess that out, but do we make any distinctions between this? Because there is a, there's a big difference right between the five-hundred-year and the one-hundred-year, and this, I just, you know.
As far as regulations.
Projects, I'm working on projects, and I know we were allowed, definitely not my area expertise, but I know that, like, there's, we're allowed to go over the five-hundred-year, but we're not allowed to go over the one-hundred-year. So there's a lot of distinctions there, right, around what's allowed and also just?
The five-hundred-year is these black dots, so you can see it just on the edges of the blue dotted area, which is the hundred-year floodplain. Now, the five-hundred-year does not have any additional regulations with the floodplain ordinance. The blue dotted areas between, if you see these solid lines within the blue dotted areas, that's the floodway. That's where you can't build anything, anything that has a residential component to it. If you do build anything in the floodway, it does have to have engineering studies that confirm that it does not increase, or does not change the flood hazard upstream or downstream from that. But the area between those solid lines and this, the blue dotted area, that's the hundred-year floodplain. You can build in it, you do have to have a special flood permit to do it. You also have to have an engineer to resist the force and lift of floodwaters, and all of the finished floor elevation and utilities have to be located to the, to the base flood elevation.
Just to jump back quickly to Commissioner Dan, Dan's question about when we reason language like suggested, so if you take that site that's in the pink area, the northernmost site there, you might have language that says, "We suggest this use be in a transportation corridor." And you can see that one's right outside the, the transportation corridor, but someone could come up in with a plan that they're going to build a new road or some kind of infrastructure to allow that and to mitigate that factor. So that's why we use language suggest rather than mandate, because at that point, like I said, this is more intense development, so we want to include some flexibility that allows an individual to satisfy those concerns without just saying, "It's outside of transportation corridor." No. I mean, there, there may be a situation where that's allowed, so that's where we got into some of that language that doesn't clearly define, but it's a decision-making tool for appointed boards and, and the commissioners rather than an, an absolute for developers. The developers should be going to the, the zoning ordinance.
I just really like the visual. I think the more visuals we can get people in front, and it's, and with, with explanation like that, the better. I'm not really complaining about it, I'm just thinking more, if I was a developer, and I would be a very good one, probably, but, but, you know, just, the more we give people transparent upfront information, the better the whole process works. I think we do that generally, but any visuals we can do, even better.
So this is, the next slide is Josh is going to talk about building permits that have been issued last two years.
Okay, so what you see on here is the official date on zoning is December of two thousand nine, so I took all of the commercial new construction building permits from two thousand nine up until the end of two thousand fourteen and put them on the maps. And these, these are the permits that were issued by our building and inspections department. And just one of the trends I wanted to highlight is with commercial development, as you can see, you're seeing it take place in the MSD area and the urban core area. You're seeing very little development comparatively out in open use. When you do see development open use, you see some patterns where it's along these major corridors, and that goes pretty much for every major corridor. That already follows the, the recommendations of the, of the land use plan generally. There are a few outliers, and you see some of these. Generally speaking, when I started looking at these outliers, there was nothing out there that alarmed me. Some of them are school permits, some of them are for recreational facilities like Navitas. None of them were for huge, noxious, industrial-type facilities. It was for existing commercial stuff that you may not normally think of as being commercial, more like recreational, community gathering spaces. There was really not a lot of commercial development from a retail or industry standpoint going on out in those areas.
So those go through the planning board and the board of adjustments, so that, that those two boards, that common sense approach to looking at some of these out in those areas has been effective, you know, in this time since two thousand nine now.
Generally speaking, these would, would just go through a very rudimentary review with us for, for like, is what we're going to look at. What's, what's causing this? I, I mean, is I, I don't think people really want to cite the business for the most part outside of transportation infrastructure. I mean, you don't want your trucks having to drive all the way to, across the county to get there, and, and outside of where water and sewer are easily available. I think the land use constraints that we've already identified are driving that. Residential building permits tend to spread out quite, quite a bit more, just to go back. Commercial building permits, that was somewhere in the neighborhood between four and five hundred, depending on how you look at it. This is somewhere in the neighborhood of seven thousand plus building permits. You see some of the same trends. You do see concentration along the corridors, but the distance that people are willing to travel off of a corridor for returning to and from their residence each day is a little bit greater. And one of the things that, that you're, that you can see in the pattern that's not necessarily mapped there is what people consider a corridor for residential development is a little bit different. So, um, right along here, you know, you can tell that's a development along the street, just like you have out here along the Kane Creek area. Still concentrated along major roads. The other thing that I would point out is one of the outliers is in this kind of lime green area. You don't see a lot of development in those areas. That's the residential locations. These zoning districts require some minimum lot size, an acre. And those are the areas that we identified as being environmentally sensitive areas. So a lot of those areas are, are pretty steep slopes, so just by default, it's not where people want to develop heavy residential densities. That, and we'll turn back to you. John?
All right. So we're going to talk about, these are similar things that we've worked with y'all, and there's a couple of things in here that we like to initiate and have set up. One, as I mentioned before, is the Zonda Hollow. It's just areas that are inside the district that have been overlooked by one way or the other. Create business district overlays. Heard some discussion about that. Allow hung labeled manufactured homes in all districts. Increase protection along the Blue Ridge Parkway overlay. Regulate commercial development and review. Build flood types. We recommend that, which is like, we only have a blind primary development right now. It's hard to fit everything that comes into the board, you know, whether it's residential or commercial or mixed use, you know, into one thing. So just, it would give, give us some options to help people. Increase density for affordable workforce housing development. Decrease allowed density in large tracts for public utilities and apply a detailed zoning when sewer services extended onto that area. And there may be others, but that's, that's the ones that you.
All right. Well, I'm going to take these, I'd say take them one by one. Let's just, and we can't vote today if you're not in session, but I think you're looking for a general, is this worth going for, for their extended staff time on?
Yes.
Or is it no type of question? Okay. Let's take up the Zonda Hollows. Is there any strong, let's just do a very strong objection to these things. Or any specific comments any commissioner has to add? Zonda Hollows?
I think it's just.
We've got close to three hundred of these. I mean, there's a lot.
Tell me again, what, tell me again.
Yeah, parcels, I'm sorry. But I mean, it's, there's a number of parcels, but I mean, it's just, there's a lot of.
So we're going to be, like, doing this over the course of some?
Well, we, we would, you know, we'd go in and make those, we'd get them involved.
Okay.
The find out on hold.
It's a, it's an area that either when municipalities zone, or annex rather, they missed it. Their, their, their description wasn't for that. It's just areas that, okay, Woodford Zone, or Annexes up through here, I'm not really interested in doing anything over here. I mean, at that point, there wasn't anything there, and they annexed around it. And I'd say those areas that we can't, we couldn't, we've extended something, we couldn't do things unless, like I said, that little discussion was changed last year or last year.
That's extremely aggressive in annex. Didn't leave that property under the ETJ of the district.
It could have, but in a lot of cases it didn't.
It was just where the, a lot of times is where the ETJs bumped into each other, and you had two touching ETJs, and then counties already couldn't reach in there because we can't leap, we couldn't leap over the two ETJ.
Well, exactly. Once, once we did, or ET, you know, ETJ was gone, now we've got it back, done, and I was, how did we miss it?
We didn't miss them, it wasn't contiguous, and it didn't meet that.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Yeah.
The size wasn't large enough that we could go ahead and zone, so that's what, there was local legislation to allow a bulk county to get these little pieces of property that otherwise couldn't be done as much as size.
So we got all those properties out there and up something different.
I think it's just consistent and is consistent with our land use plan to go ahead and get rid of the Zonda Hollows.
We have a lot, you know, as I was coming back, we have an opportunity at each one of those. We're going, we're going to be looking at all of it. They're going to do that.
Yeah, they're good, man.
Yes, I think what we're doing today is to use some general direction without specific vote on details to develop these things. Come back to us, and then we have a, a open session meeting formally, talk about them, and you get pros and cons and we vote on them. Is that, that's kind of what we're doing now, right?
You all can see the direction.
Yeah. Okay. Create business, okay, anything else on Zonda Hollow? Create business overlay, this, 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 this kind of like.
Yeah. I guess we've looked, I think there's been some discussion obviously about Candler and some of the things that are happening there with particular business and stuff. And, you know, we also, I think, in discussion, looking at possible Swananoa and maybe down in South Bunkham, down near the Kierah County line, there could be interest in doing this. We'd look at just business standards as far as, okay, being able to, how you set inventory, maybe put up fences required. I'm not, we're not talking about trees or flowers or anything like that. Basically, just trying to keep stuff a little bit more orderly working. Just how you, how you, how you develop your business or keep your business. You know, instead of the garage and everything jammed in, keep it back off the right of way, maybe keep it back in the back of the building versus out in the front. If we went down this road, obviously, we'd go out into the, these areas, sit down, have some community meetings, and get some input.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really a fan of going out and, you know, these, you know, these overlays. You know, when you reach out in some of these places, you know, you're going to get in, you know, you may take the one thing that is, is a problem and create, and try to fix it and create all these problems for others, which is, is a concern of mine. You know, I'm, and I don't know if we had this discussion today, but, you know, my concern is, you know, is if there's something, and they come from an ETJ or something, and we do enforcement, I'm concerned about. You know, I brought this, you know, I gave a specific example, and we don't have to get into long discussions about today, but, you know, you know, there's a, there's a Delphix store located within three hundred feet of the Turf Drive. Must be a little known about, the new term, and it's there, it got there, and it was in the ETJ, and the city chose to not address it.
Okay, that's, just so you know, that's not right. Go ahead.
Okay.
You know how hard I've worked on that? Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
No, 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 no. So I don't want to, I don't want to send that, but it did not get addressed, or it did not get fixed.
That's a fair way to say it.
It did not get fixed, yeah. Because that was a, a long time ago when you were.
Maybe long, yeah.
So, but anyhow, it's still there. Okay? So, and so that, that creates a source, it's this frustrating thing when you're talking about zoning, and you have, you're not supposed to have one within a thousand feet, and you have one within a thousand feet. And then, you know, the frustration and enforcement. I don't have the answer to that, you know. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not, we're not creating other things that we can't take care of or enforce. We're just going to create a hardship over the deal with some of these things that are... It's just very frustrating for me. And, and, and I will say this, Holly, because Holly called the, is that back, oh gosh, maybe twelve years ago, maybe, she actually came out and looked at that. And there was discussion also with the county attorney at that time. And it, for whatever reason, would not have been able to do that, and that is, that is very frustrating.
Now, this part of the, this part of the whole frustration of the ETJ, right, was that it creates overlapping area of responsibility between towns and the county, and there was often times this, you know, if there's a problem, you call the town or the county. And that's part of the reason that I think people want to get rid of the ETJ is that it wasn't effective. But that's, that's the patch, like, ETJs are gone, so the.
So now we got it.
So now it's, if you want to do something about a Joe, yes, we could do it, we do. And it's just on us, so you can't point to Dick or anybody else. So we want to do something, or we're not doing it.
Do I want to do something about that particular one? You bet.
Can I say something about the overlay? In talking to people in Candler, Swananoa, business owners, landowners, they want to do something to the ones I've talked to, want to clean up their accounts. And when I, you know, kind of after talking to you all about the overlay, and I think it's pretty benign, I think to me, it's something that we should pursue going out in neighborhoods because it, it will clean that up. And, you know, Candler and Swananoa have a lot of content offering, they're not the most loved, and I think it shows a lot of love that we care and we're trying to. And it's very, what you explained to me was very benign.
Well, I would say that's it, we went down this road.
Why are we taking one by that? In Canada? Let's take that apple out of there. You know, instead of trying to enforce a lot of things on other people, we have junk load, we have salvage gear, you know, we have all of these things. That is basically a salvage place. That is junk that's come from the military, that's hoard tents, and, you know, it should be put under the salvage rules, that's a car or whatever, but I cannot see, like, just like Helen talking about Swananoa, I understand, it's going down. We're trying to find a way to not develop, to be able to put something in there so the people have something to be able to work on their stuff. Why do we want to force people to work on their stuff if they can't afford it at the present time? This gentleman in Canada, he can afford it. You've got to give him a lot of money to buy this property across the street, the second portion, across the street, because I was, I had a business out there during that pick of the tune. And, you know, it's been, it's been like that. They, they're going back to the city. The city had the ETJ. What the city utilized, they didn't service the other thing, but they did utilize telling the people what they can build and permitting them getting that. So that's, it goes back to the same thing. We got one person in Canada that, you know, the people really talked about, and it's been on for years, and we need to figure out how to help them fix that, that particular problem, which is, as Commissioner, it's not a problem of everybody in Canada.
John, in terms of process for, I mean, so, I'm going to have this conversation, but the way I understand it is that you're asking us, should we use staff time to develop this tool in our toolbox? And then, and then we would decide, you know, quarter by quarter, whether to, because we have to do that kind of, have a conversation about, like, okay, we're going to vote to put an overlay over whatever, right?
Obviously.
So I guess, I guess where I'm thinking is, it would be helpful to know, like, how much, I'm, I'm predisposed to kind of the development of the tool, because I feel like it would be in conversation with, with folks, it would be impacted, so you can kind of learn and come up with something. And then ultimately, we're going to have to decide, you know, in here, some property owners hate it, love it, you know, and, and pay attention at that point, whether to actually impose it. So how much work are we talking about kind of developing the tool?
Well, I think, I mean.
Do you mind if we have reviews?
Yeah, and I think it's, I mean, I think it's fair enough. Obviously, we're going to have some community meetings, where we want to do this. And we'll have to determine how far to take. Let's just take Swananoa as an example. I mean, you start at Kendall's, and then how far do you go toward Blackmounts, you know, municipal ends? So I think the, I think the concept is not a wide war. It's, it's the time that it takes and get the input of the public to say, I want this or I don't want that. And then we have to determine, okay, how, how regulatory do we want to get? And then you have to either agree or disagree to say, we're ratcheting it up, or, you know, people just don't want this.
But, but for today, you're looking for direction from us, if we even want to go forward.
I'm good with it, Paul. I've heard about these problems, just by the way the commissioner, at least get out there, talk to people, see what they want to do, and then we can make the final decision whether we want to do it.
I'm, I'm supportive of the development. I mean, it seems like there's two pieces. There's development of the, the tool, and then there's the kind of determination with the community about, you know, how to, where, how to implement. So it seems like the second one's the time saver, so, I mean, that's the time, the time saver. So I'm supportive of creating the overlay and then, and then seeing how we go forward.
I guess my, my question about this is, you're talking about a business, a business district overlay, that would be the same overlay officially being applied in the county. And maybe there's, you know, maybe there's different levels of enthusiasm in some of the different areas that's going to be applied. So, I mean, is, is that the right way? And so that would be one way of going about impressing a, a set of issues or concerns that may be, you know, prevalent in both areas. It's not only, I guess the other way you could go about doing this, I mean, let's just, let's just say Swananoa really wanted to do some stuff, really wanted some attention there. I guess my question is, like, is it the same set of issues there that there might be in some of the areas of the county, so that, you know, you do this one overlay, and then just decide where to apply it? Or, you know, another approach would be to say, let's do an overlay for Swananoa. If you need Swananoa, you can just do it there, and then if you wanted to do something somewhere else, you could. It might have some commonality, it might have some differences, but, I mean, would that be a different way of doing it in terms of just sort of like saying, yeah, let's go talk to Swananoa and see what they're interested in, let's go talk, if there's other areas that have an interest, we can talk to them, but, because it sounds like we're going to come in with one overlay that would be applied in different areas, and I just wonder if there might be some kind of more unique, whatever, things that maybe, you know, maybe there'd be a Swananoa overlay, if another area wants an overlay, it may not look exactly like what Swananoa.
It might not.
Some areas don't want it at all, and, you know, that's.
That's, that's the, that's the issue. We're, we're talking about something and we're talking about doing it, but if we end up saying that there's going to be an overlay, we're going to add effort where, that, you know, if we vote, it's going to be for effort, or it's not going to be a half, half deal.
No, it's not true, though. I mean, we will vote, to create a tool is one thing, and then where we put it is a whole different thing, so it doesn't mean we'll put it everywhere. Exactly, where it needs to go, I mean, it's like, that would actually protect, you know, from, from that kind of one side gets off, so.
But if you go into the Swananoa area, just, just go back to our center of Nesbit, okay? Right across from where the beacon's at, on that little road, they got a shop that they keep rest bars in, it was an old shop, and then they, there's a store, it's next door, it's old, and there's a lot of areas that could be totally fixed up in that area. Well, then we're getting ready to, you know, people out there say, I don't like this, or I want a sidewalk, or, you know, you know, if we're going to do a business, we're going to have to do this, so we're going to start implementing more things on people that are trying to do business in Bunkham County, no matter if it's a small business, or they can't afford to paint the building today in, in areas. All we're doing is implementing more rules and regulations that's going to cost people money every time that they try to walk in the door or try to do something.
I think it's kind of.
We have a hard time, we have a hard time.
We're getting direction now, though. I don't think we're going to.
But that is, that is part of the direction, David.
Well, I think they're looking, there's a majority of the board want to be the fore, and get information, come back to us. That's, that's the way I believe we're going. So I, I guess, I hear where you're at. I don't know where everybody else thinks about some of that.
Mr. Chairman, just one point for everybody, just to remember, I mean, Holly pointed out, I think it's real good to remember what tools you have in your toolbox and which ones you can use. Just because that new overlay may be put down in some zones doesn't mean it's going to fix these frustrations moving forward, because it doesn't go backwards.
That, that, there, there is the challenge and the, and the frustration, you know, when you, when you, when you have zoning areas that are zoned, and, and ETJ is, is a problem. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I am not a fan of expanding and the overreach of zoning, I'm not. But if what's already in place, what I am frustrated over, and where some of this comes from, is what you do about it once and then again. You know, and we have a, we have a Delphix.
You know, and we have a, we have a Delta brick wall over there, 300 feet of it, sure, in Bunkham County. And zoning came in in 2009. In my opinion, that's a problem. Now, for the commissioner, do I know how to fix it? No. Am I frustrated over it? Yes. Don't want something done about it? You betcha. So enforcement, to me, once this is in there, I mean, is everybody going to follow the rules? Or we just creating rules that people, you know, that we're not going to do anything about? And so that, that's my concern. We're going to go do an overlay, do this, you know, we're creating, we're creating additional rules. And, you know, to me, there's confusion in my mind on, on enforcing what we have now and trying to take care of. And I use that one example because it's very relevant to me, but...
So I would just say, in terms of kind of maybe able to move all these dots, that, you know, particularly based on the, you know, one of the rezoning matter that we had just recently, that, and given what I know about the interest of, you know, a lot of people in Swananoa to kind of be proactive about their, that corridor that they feel like with some, you know, attention and some forward thinking, can be a place that will generate more economic activity and da, 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 da. I would be supportive of, you know, pursuing a business district overlay with, in, in, in relationship with that Swananoa over there. And then maybe that will be our pilot, and then we can kind of see how...
Yeah, I, I think it's like Commissioner Lemon said, I don't think it's one side gets off.
Any other direction? Last comment I would like to make there, Tim, to talk about, you know, some new rules or standards and things like that. And that's, I'm definitely open to that in, in areas where people are, are asking to, to consider that. But it may be some other things too, I mean, we are going to do, you know, Swananoa or other community input sessions. I think there might be, I, I guess I'd also just like to hear other kind of planning ideas that would come out of those kind of meetings. Because part of it may be, you know, with the, with the steps that the state's taken where, you know, the, the boundaries of the towns and cities really aren't going to change anymore. They're fixed where they are. And so the reality is, we're going to have these other areas of the county that are going to be urbanizing and looking more and more like towns and cities, but they're not going to be located inside any, they're not going to be part of Black Mound. They're not going to be part of Asheville. So what you think is good for the thing about them is the reality. And I think part of the reality that means for the county, though, is that we're going to have to get involved in some things that maybe traditionally we thought of as the business more in towns and cities, like some of the infrastructure stuff in these areas. And people have already been speaking up for sidewalks in certain areas that are outside of the town limits. And I, you know, I guess Swananoa, I would, I mean, those are the things that kind of jump out to me is this area is, you know, we want to see it grow in a healthy way, and there's, there's not sidewalks, there's not, you know, places to kind of make it a pedestrian, safe environment. People got hurt out there recently. So I'd like to hear those kind of ideas too, if we're going to have a, you know, again, we can talk about Swananoa, but you're saying with other areas too. You know, what are the other kind of things people feel like need to happen from a planning standpoint to see good growth in those areas? And then what, you know, what we might even plan for some other things in addition to, you know, some overlays from the zoning sector? Mr. Paul?
Okay, when we give direction for you to study a business overlay, when you come back with that information, is it determined, you know, tool and toolbox have been used a lot? Does it then become a tool in our toolbox? Or will we have a separate opportunity to vote to accept whether to use it or not ever?
Exactly. It'll have to go, you know, we'll go through the planning board and, you know, get recommendations there. And then it comes all up to you through the process of the judge in Swananoa.
So first we get, first we get the chance to say like, we want the tool, and then we get the chance to say if we want to use it.
Yeah, I mean, we develop, it's here, but we can't implement it without.
It will require text and map amendments for the zoning ordinance, for zoning map to be able to apply those.
And you'll have to prove it.
And it would require, I mean, one of the things that's been important to y'all is notification of the affected property owners. I mean, this is not something that would be implemented without a chance for those people to come and speak.
May it be for the public?
That's correct.
Any other lay-ins that you got?
All right. Allow, how manufactured homes in all the districts?
Well, I'll start that conversation. I don't know if we want to have that conversation in affordable housing presentation or where we want to talk about now. It's probably going to overlap back and forth, I would think. But just to preface it, and I guess we could have, do whatever way you want to do it. Where, where, that obviously comes from something that's very, very close to me. And if you go, you get out in the county, there are people that, you know, affordable housing is a challenge. In Bunkham County, it's a challenge. North Carolina's a challenge, all over the country, pretty good. If you go to different parts of the country, you see that, that affordable housing is addressed in different ways based on the acceptability of, and the appearance of these, these products. If you go, if you go far west, you find that the terms manufactured and modular basically merge. You know, there's not that separation of those two, it's just based on, here's a house, here's how it's built. Here's the size, here's the way it looks, and then it fits within that community. And, and I think in Bunkham County, we're going to have to get to that thought process. Where that when someone is wanting to cite a home or build, construct a home on their property, that it's going to be more about that person's, you know, right to have a home on their property. And then if it's going to be in certain areas, to allow to be placed there based on the aesthetics of the exterior. And the aesthetics of the exterior of new manufactured housing today can be basically whatever you want it to look like. You know, it would have dormers, it would have gutters, it would have, you would have, you know, brick under the skirt, and you could have things like that. But to, to explore what that would look like, I think is what we're talking about. You know, what requirements would, would be reasonable to be placed on manufactured housing to allow them to go into, you know, the R1, R2 areas. The other thing that, that would happen is by leaving our, leaving manufactured housing parks in R3, that every time somebody decides to, you know, build or construct or purchase a factory-built house, they would not have to come in and change it to R3 or whatever the, there's a second one?
RLD?
RL, they would not have to come in and ask for that, in various, because we would either, we would either allow it in those areas, or we would create a, you know, RM, or whatever, and then to allow it to be able to do that. Does it affect a lot of people? What it, what it does affect is, is, I would say yes, and I would say people's thoughts are changing. You know, had this discussion before, you've seen a lot of discussion about tiny homes, various types of housing. It's, you know, if we're wanting smaller homes, the efficiency of building products indoor as opposed to outdoor makes a, the efficiencies of this product, it's not, it's not what people think of back in the seventies. Seventies was 50 years ago. Forty years ago? Forty years ago. Eighty, nearly eighties, this thirty years ago.
I, I think, I, I think for me, we should, I'm, I'm not, I don't think there, I don't think manufactured homes are affordable housing. So I think that's a really important distinction for me. And so that's why I'm happy to have the discussion now. I mean, I am so not convinced they're affordable housing. Joe, you even talked about on Facebook about how they're not there yet with energy efficiency.
No, I did not.
Yeah, you did. There's arguments about the cost versus tick belt. So to me, that's a whole big thing that, that we have to discuss and address, whether they are affordable housing. I'm not convinced that they are.
But all you have to do to commissioners, with all due respect to Mr. Paul, all you have to do is require that a house be energy-starred. Most towns now have been energy-starred for $600. You know, the efficiency of, of energy star, energy star is around in, in that industry for 20 years. You can take the, and I'm no longer in that industry anymore, just so everybody, yeah, I think everybody here knows that. But it's been recovered five years, and of course, I'm a little passionate about, about the process. But you can take a 1,200 square foot home and build it indoors, and put the waste of that home into 55 gallon trash bin. By allowing this type of construction in Bunkham County, you also even go in the direction of reducing waste into our landfill. When you go build a 1,100 or 1,200 square foot house, if anybody goes up there and looks at it, how many dumpsters do they fill up and put in the landfill? This is also a way to all the way back. You know, back 20, 30 years ago, when part of the construction was to reuse parts in other parts of plants, of the factory, where they would actually go in the flooring department, not throw away the OSB, but use it for vacuuming in the cabinet department. That was called being cheap. Today, that's repurposing. Today, that's green. Today, that's efficient. And to not allow, to, to, to not, to even think, to not allow an efficient, less waste, lower price product in Bunkham County is not only not opening their minds, but it's not good for taxpayers, and it's not good for the people. And it restricts their choice, puts more emissions in the air, puts more trash in our landfill. And until you really know everything about that process, then you cannot weigh in, whether it's one comment, and I, you know... If I, if I ever said they're not there yet, you know, that what that would mean would be they're continuing to improve. You know, you can't even imagine next year where that product will be, because it is a much more efficient way of building. The restriction is, is, you know, typically in two or three pieces. And so you've got to get a match with what it looks like. So you have to do that. And we can easily do that. It was done in, it's done in counties all around us, Emerson County, they did it, you know, very, very easily. It's done in other counties. And if you do not place these individual home decisions in with a, in with 1970, 1980 mobile home parks, then I think it, it will make it to where the product will be improved, it grow, it look better. People are going to be, you know, more proud of it than someone. And I'll give you an example, and I will hush up. I was in Kentucky this, this weekend, and was driving up to Lexington, and I got on 64. And it was, it was sunny. It was beautiful. He's never driven up in that part of the county, you need to go up there. So we're driving, we're looking for horse farms, and, you know, we're looking at the countryside. And we see on the, on the left, we see about, you know, four or five million dollar house, what looked to be just an incredible home on this massive piece of property. And we saw a barn that's, you know, maybe a million dollar barn. Well, the next property right beside it, with, with the line trees and beautiful, and it was, I don't know, probably 20, 28 or plus. The manufactured housing community, single wide, gorgeous there. Calls, it was cited properly, it had proper aesthetics, it was affordable. And the person decided, and decided was also someone that lived in a house of its own. And so that's where I'm coming from on this. And what I, what I would love to see is us look at how that would look. Find the, the exterior, find what would, how would fit in certain communities. Explore the opportunity of making this fit in communities throughout, throughout Bunkham County as an op, as an option for them to be able to, to choose. Rather than just dwelling in the past and saying, we don't want that type of house. And I would love to, I would just love to see. One, one more thing on that, I believe, called affordable housing. When you go get it from it, to build the home, it's a whole lot more than bringing one in and setting it because it had to meet the standards before it got here. And, you know, that's, you know, it goes back to the same thing. It's built indoors, it'll go through the rain process, it'll go through a lot of processes. A nice home, or any, you can start building it one day, it rains on all the tuba fours before you get any shoot rock or even think about getting rid of them. These, these are draft, but a wall of tuba four, you build one of them out there, it's tuba four. They all got insulation in them. You can build tuba sixes. They did the same thing in the mobile home deal last one time, in fact, you did, it was $1,800 more. To build the outer walls into the sixes, and the modular, the non-modular, even, even the others. So, you know, yeah, it is poor, but it goes back to the same thing. Permitting, we're stepping up to a different area of permitting from, you know, here's a modular home. If we can save this much money from permitting to build this house, because you go through all these layers of electricians, the whole package. This home comes in and it's got the lights, all you've got to do is hook it up, you get a permit to hook it, even on rider and round. But, I mean, it's, they have very stringent requirements, and there's no change in, there's no change in enforcement. They have to set according to the way the manufacturer requires to be set. There's, there's instructions there. We act, I mean, we actually did this once before, I don't remember, Jim, and you might remember when it was, it's back, I'll tell you. It's maybe eight, eight years ago, maybe?
So Nathan was channeling.
Yeah. And, and, and it wasn't a difficult, you know, thing to do. The, the stats were there, we wrote those down, and we, you know, used other areas. I think that, I think that a lot of the work is all we've done, you know, preparation, you know, for it, so.
So what's, did you have some, what's...
I have a couple of questions to be related to some of the things people brought up already. So, question to this, so, so the, we currently, manufactured homes, mobile homes are allowed in certain districts, but allowed in others. And, you know, Joe's bringing up the idea, you know, there are, there are design parameters that could be required if you wanted to, the ideas that we brought up about maybe there could be requirements potentially for energy efficiency that would go beyond just the sort of basic building code? Something like that? You know, so in, in our, in the current ordinance, there's districts where it's allowed and not allowed. But there's no, none of those standards in terms of design standards or energy efficiency standards are required in any of the existing districts, right? It's just either it's allowed or it's not allowed, it's termed districts, and if you meet the building code, you're allowed to do it. And then in other areas, it's not, you can't do it at all, no matter what you do. So that's, in my opinion, accurately describing this status quo.
It's a high level manufactured home, and it doesn't matter if it's a single wide, a double wide, brand new, or made in 1974.
Okay. So I guess I'm just, you know, for myself, this is definitely not my area of expertise at all. I don't think I could probably get a really great answer if someone asked me to define all the nuances between modular and manufactured. So, you know, I, I definitely don't claim the, you know, the expert on this. But to me, I'd say I'm open to ideas. I definitely, if we are going to do things, I, I definitely, you know, think it's all about, you know, compatibility with neighborhoods and, and, and good designs. And I definitely agree with Alan about the energy efficiency. You know, that's, I think this is an important value that the community has, we want to see green building. And so to the extent that we can, you know, have approaches that are neighborhood sensitive and, and are setting very, very good standards for energy efficiency, I'm open, I'm open to ideas. So, but, anyway, those are, that's, that's going to be there, I'm out on it.
It goes back to the same thing. I had it in Canler, when I had a parlor, I had a, a, a lodge, a mobile office. Ten by whatever, and I said, I had it set up, I did. It, the walls were new to about that. It, the walls and anything about that, that's about that much on sure. But it's pretty energy efficient. And, you know, you've got businesses in the woods, you've got, now you have people around town that have these. But everything that's coming through now, from what I've seen from the mobile homes, it's across right from. You know, you've got the dormers, you've got the suit, you've got the ten-story stuff. And, and, and I agree, we have a home development that looks like it could be a modular. And, you know, but on the backside of this, we have mobile homes that are lined up by ghosts, probably. That I believe in pretty decent well, and, you know, it goes back to the same thing. If you have somebody that puts in a double wide development, and they put, we've got restrictions now, which finally we do. But even a person that does the subdivisions, subdivisions are not allowed, I mean. But telling people, Brownie, what they have to do and call it green. You know, we've got green for, for us, but it's froze up, I don't know how many times so far. So, you know, just instructing people what they have to buy is, is not our job. Here's, here's the good, here's the good news for, for those two positions. Here's the good news, is that the factory-built industry was building green before green was ever even talked about. So you call it, they call it efficient, they call it that, you know. But if you look at this picture in the middle here. That house can be built inside. All they do is make one half longer than the other, porch is part of the process, and they bump, and they bump it out, so that, that can be built in. And with them, can be built as a double wide.
Any other directions in the staff?
Have you guys, have you guys heard about robot houses yet?
I have not, but I have robot, robot houses.
It's, it's an interesting.
I have not, I would like to hear.
Joe, Joe Kendall has this facility in Charleston, South Carolina. I mean, it's, I guess, it's obviously some kind of big manufacturer, you know, some idea, but it's, they basically got this like highly automated system for, for buildings.
Guard from self-defense.
I would call them robot houses, so I don't want to get in touch with them.
Yeah.
We'll get to that later, so.
So, you know, why are you?
John, do you feel like you have any preference?
Listen, I could bring a little player if you could, if y'all would want me to.
I think we got, I do think we got enough to know whether or not we felt at all, and we've heard of it.
Well, I would just say, I, I would agree, only my way would be, I agree with Brownie. We're going to do it, and our goals are to make sure we have everybody have something that has value and all. I think we look at all of them, we don't look at just the new stuff, I think we have to look at everything. Because we don't, I don't think it's fair for people to have inferior standards to, to what we do and change. So I think it's, I'd like to see everything considered, and I'm good the way it is, but I would, we're going to do it. I think we've got the ones that are out there now also, make sure they're, as Fisher even said, energy efficient and really have some value.
The ones that are already being lived in, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Well, you can't, you can't go just tell people what they do. You can't go, couch mining today, that's why big brands, they're going to come in and damage them, that's the challenge.
I thought we were just talking about zoning, like what would be allowed in the future.
But if you're going to expand it and allow them, and then set parameters for what they have to be, then how is it fair for the new people that want to acquire them, when the older ones don't have the same standards?
You could say the same thing about stick-built homes, though.
Yeah, you'd have to go back and change that. But here, to, to, to the chairman's thought, lady, is what's, what will happen is that those people that want to improve their home and want a more efficient home and want a better home, will do that because they're allowed to now. Right now, somebody's living in a single wide, they're living in an older single wide, and they're living, they cannot go. And, and there's a lot of R1, R2 areas that were taken in when zoning occurred, where, you know, they're in Tondo, they're in Camar, they're in Glass Street, the Navy Street. There are all those, those equal communities. And there are, there are these single wides that are, that people will, would probably, would probably upgrade to a, to a multi-section. If that, if the zoning was there, then they'd be able to do that.
They can do that, if there's, even if it's non-conforming now, if it's a mobile home in R1, they can replace that with another mobile home. It can be a bigger home as long as they meet setback requirements.
But once that house is gone, they cannot.
They have a hundred and eighty days to replace it.
But if there's an older, older home sitting there, and we got them out there in the community right now, where they have those older homes, and they're using them for storage and everything else. But they don't want to run the risk of pulling that house off of there. You know, if they're, if, if they don't have to worry about that. And what you'll also see is some of those, those little bitty homes that are not being lived in, that they're using to store stuff in. They will take them out there, and they will clean, also clean that, that area, because they don't have, they don't have to worry about.
They have six months now.
Yeah, that's what I understand, six months is not, I mean.
I think we really talked about this, so we kind of, this is very important, and I'm glad we did it, but I think we're kind of going off.
Yeah, I realize that y'all have got other commitments, so it's like a good concern.
It is eleven, I, I would say, why don't y'all come back and show us? Is it any objection?
I think, you know, you, there's, there's enough direction for them to move it forward on that, okay, come back to China.
Okay, increased protection of the Blue Ridge Parkway overlay. This is what I think I put out there. I, I would like for the staff to work with the Blue Ridge Parkway and possibly make the steep slip walls apply to that overlay area. I think there may be some overlap, because I understand there are fifty miles that aren't, is that right, Josh, fifty miles? The figures that were not on the Blue Ridge Parkway in Bunkin County that did not have any.
Well, it's fifty miles total that runs through. I would say without any type of protection, you're looking at, I mean, if we were going to roughshod it about, I mean, well, I'm going to back up. Not any protection with the current Blue Ridge Parkway overlay protections, you're looking at about a third of that.
Okay.
That's within our jurisdiction, because, I mean, as we looked at the northern section of the Parkway, does fall under the Stephen protected bridge areas. And that's really getting at the types of restrictions I think you want to see in terms of limiting impacts on the shade and the surface and previous surface and making compatible.
I'd just like to take a look at that. I would also, while I'm here and have a floor, I would like to have a, a change in our, our, our plan, our overall. Language plan to have a statement that we do respect the Blue Ridge Parkway, we want to preserve and protect this national fracture. And it works in language in there, so that in the future, we have that to always go back to, there's no question. I would even probably include National Forest, although that's not here. But I just think we have these, we, we need to respect that this is a national asset we have that we are entrusted with. And so I would like some language on both, if, that would be my, that would be my preference. What's the rest of the board?
How's the number in with that?
Any objection to having them come back and show us something on that? I think you need to meet with them and kind of see, I know we've done that from time to time, but it'll be done recently.
Let's dump a fudge, I'll derive anything we want to just start with that.
Well, some of the Blue Ridge Parkway, like five hundred feet on the east side, that's all they have.
It's a quarter mile on the east side, that's the line that we have.
But, right, the Blue Ridge Parkway itself, though, I think there are parts that seem like.
It's pretty much some sort of shoulder to shoulder.
Yes, but, because you're right, they do have a variety, I guess we're talking about the land around it too. But they do not have jurisdiction.
Oh, and around.
But I'd like to see what you've come up with on that.
You talk about language, you know, to maybe say, you know. You have, I'm not hearing you say, well, we want a double F I N G or whatever.
No, we wouldn't have the power to do that. But I, I do think maybe you can see slip wall applied right next to it. I think there are places where it doesn't apply, is that right? It has some, some rules, because, well, just, there are places in Virginia where they have developed, and they don't, they don't, nobody goes to overlooks anymore. That is, there's dead zones in Blue Ridge Parkway, and they're, they just develop right next to the edge. You know, they're going to develop, I just want to have some rules that make, make it protected and preserved to the point that it deserves.
So, so David, I'm understanding you, because I think it's, I mean, what I learn is a little bit more than just the language. I mean, that's important, I'm very supportive of that. But where, perhaps where there's not, there's a, the steep slopes is not doing the work of the overlay, we want to look at those.
That might be, that may be something, well, that's a possibility, that's what I'm going to come back with. Want to just throw this out, I mean, I don't want to make it impossible. I'm not, people have a right to build their property, but I do think the Blue Ridge Parkway is a special case, which it should be treated, so.
Yeah, I think it's treasure, it's protected.
Any other comments on that? Again, we're not both today, we're just saying, if you go forward, you go. Okay, regulate commercial property and open use. Again, I think this is one I've kind of pushed. Eighty percent of our land is open use, although Josh showed us a map today, that it's, it kind of is, it's kind of not, because you have a lot of overlays over that. I still think it'd be nice to have a plan to look at it, I'm not as, because we do have overlays, I don't know that it's quite as burning issues. It might have been before reviewing the map and talking with her about it, but what was, feel the rest of the board?
I think it's really important to have that, because, you know, somebody can have beautiful, active land out wherever, North Port Rowick. And, there's that, anyways, and then all of a sudden, there's a welding shop, you know, going in. And, you know, it's not a thing they can't, but have more direction with that.
Thanks, one, one challenge that I would, that I would give to this, is just to, to consider that a lot of times when, you know, one, one challenge we have in the county is, is available land for, is available land for, available land, commercial land. Just to, you know, when people are looking to come here and they're looking at how much available commercial property there is. They might look at, if we drastically change maps or something like that, they might look at it and make their decision before ever applying for something. We want, we don't, we don't want to do that, we want to be open to, we want to make, we want to be open to dialogue to people that are wanting to, you know, decide, you know, what, if it's commercial and create shop, we want to be open to that sort of thing, and we're having our discussions, and that's all.
Do y'all know, in terms of the open use, but it's not, there's not overlays on that? What percentage or rough type percentage that there is of utilities that are, that you can access on the map, or?
I think there is any. Yeah, I think when you look at the.
I didn't want to hear that said out loud, sorry.
What Josh put together, there's not a lot of.
And when you look at, at utilities provision in the remaining open use area, you've got some pretty significant challenges. I mean, a lot of it's gravity defying, which, I mean, they're, they're going to have to make some big decisions before we see utilities extended in some of those areas. I mean, there are a couple of pockets where it could be, but most of the remaining ones are there.
Or in other water sharing.
Yeah.
You've got to come from the river and, and plan this, this north.
So y'all are doing that, I mean, there were some selected docs that was out in those areas now, that where they're able to come and do that. Man, right?
Yeah, those, those dots are just commercial building permits. It tends to be where people want to develop anyways, right there along the corridor, because, I mean, if you have a business that's, that's going to have some kind of frayed or something hauled to it. You don't want to put it on a back road and try to deal with that extra expense.
And then once that, how about it, obviously, basically, you set up infrastructure, so just ones that did not require water, right? This kind of small, bomb pop type.
Or recreational type stuff. So definition of commercial is probably way too broad to have this discussion, so.
That's one thing I wanted to bring up too, and I think we feel a little bit heavy, we need to break that out.
We would, I mean, the only way we can break out building permits is to go residential, not residential, there are much of the risks we have.
Well, would, would the board have a problem? I, I'm not burning on fire with it as much as I was because of the overlays, but I would say, I think the planning board has an ongoing obligation to do this anyway, to kind of view things. When they see things get back to this, does anybody have a problem, just put it out there, nonspecific, take it up to the planning board. If y'all see things that you, you feel might be appropriate, put it out there, see if anyone wants to pursue it. Is that good?
It seems unnecessary to me to even study at this point, based on the, the utilities hurdles that they would run into. I think it's a little ironic, we just had a closed session to try to woo businesses, but yet we would study potentially regulating other businesses. So I, I don't think that it's even necessary to study. You mentioned the business overlays that are already in, or overlays that are already replaced. I don't know that it's worth the staff's time.
Okay, what's the rest of the board thinking about that?
I guess I'm just saying, you know, as you look at the, you know, look at the dots that are, are in the open use series that are happening. I mean, I would just ask the staff, the planning board, if there are different types of businesses that are getting permitted that are causing some real conflicts with neighbors, then I'd like to, I'd like to hear about those, I'd like to understand those. If there are some, if there are some reasonable standards on different kinds of businesses that are, you know, creating some real, you know, conflict or maybe some, maybe some standards and things like that need to, need to be thought through. I'm definitely open to that, but I don't want to, but I wouldn't let the staff of the planning board to go through a big exercise, just if there's not a problem that we're seeing that really needs to be solved. So, because right, right now, I'm not, I'm not seeing the problem needs to be solved, but I'm also open to the idea that maybe, you know, that there could be stuff I'm not aware of that needs to be taken into consideration. So I kind of, I don't have kind of information to give real strong guidance on it, so I'm sort of, I'm sort of open if, if there's a need here, but I'm just not seeing.
I would say, these are things that we've just heard about.
Yeah.
And really, I think when you look at the dots, we've not seen a conflict out there.
The biggest, I'm sorry, the, the biggest complaint I get out in open use has traditionally been someone that owns a residential property that brings work trucks home. Whether it be some kind of medium-scale commercial construction business, a tree cutting business. And it's, it's the person using it as, you know, a place where the workers meet up and, and go onsite. In those types of businesses, you're maybe talking ten, fifteen workers. And I, I don't feel like first swath, that's, that's what any new regulations would really go after. And I, I don't know that we're at that point yet.
Well, I think, I think the consensus of the board is that this is a solution that doesn't have a problem right now, so that's just about. Is that right, everybody?
Yes.
Next up, HUD, planning unit developments?
And like I said, this is one that we brought up, it just gives more options. We've just had a, a case of this one HUD definition, and it really doesn't work for residential, commercial. And Debbie's kind of put, put some work in it to split, split those out of the main, you know, multi-use, commercial, residential HUDs. And I think it's just got to give people a lot more options, and just trying to figure into, to one definition. We'd just like to take this to the planning board. Like I said, I think this will help people.
George?
Yeah. Any objections?
The, the next two kind of go together, is, you know, increased density in affordable housing, but then decreased density in large tracts, and I just need.
So I'll jump in on this one. I, I think this is, I think this is something we should look at on both of these. And, you know, I was trying to do some kind of work in preparation for these meetings, to go on, you know, what are the, what are the densities that are allowed in different zoning districts? Get a refresher on that. And my, you know, my take is that I think that there, I think our current zoning is too restrictive in terms of the densities that are allowed in, in some of the key transportation corridors in the county. When we look at, you know, Setley and, you know, Lee Ashwell and Lockdown, you know, like so many, that's a pattern, it's a highway. And right now, the maximum density that's allowed in even the areas that were you allowed to boast intense development in the community is twelve meters in nature. And I think that, you know, we see a lot of examples of, you know, beautiful development happening in Bunkin County, that's, that's a lot, a lot more dense than that. So I'm definitely, I'm definitely supportive of the idea that we would do some revisions to the zoning to allow more density in these key transportation corridors, that where I think the infrastructure is there, can be there to support it. And the, the transportation infrastructure is there to support it. But I, and I do think that, but I do think that we want to do what we can to encourage affordable housing development, so I'm, the direction I would like. the direction I would like to see us go on the first point would be to look at, um, providing density bonuses for builders who are, uh, doing projects in key transportation corridors. And, uh, and, you know, the ones that, the ones I'm thinking of would be the, um, commercial service, neighborhood service, the employment districts, these are all areas that, you know, really we're allowing the most intense development of anywhere in the county, yet we're limiting it, limiting it to twelve units an acre, uh, which is not bad, but there's certainly, you know, you see a lot of projects where there's, you know, you know, double that, and it fits in very well, and these, these are, you know, pretty commercial areas. Um, so I think if a builder wants to come in, if they're willing to do a percentage of affordable units in their, in their project, be it residential or mixed use, I think we should, in, in those areas, be willing to consider a significant density incentives above what's allowed in the current zoning, uh, in those key corridors. Um, I, I guess the other area, and then I think for the, for the commercial service, the neighborhood service, the employment, those seem kind of like the, the no-brainer areas to me. And maybe, maybe even, you know, although I think you got to, you know, you got to tread more carefully, uh, maybe even in some of the, um, the R districts that are also really in close proximity to those transportation corridors. Maybe we would say like within a half mile or a quarter mile or something, but if you're, if you're in those areas, I think those are the parts of the county that can really accommodate, you know, uh, higher levels of, of density. So maybe even some of the R districts, but if it's strictly limited to close proximity to transportation corridors, I'd be open to that, although again, you're starting to kind of interface more with residential or, or, you know, areas that don't have that kind of character of, of more commercial dense development. So we'd be, need to be careful on that, but I'd be open to thinking through, uh, thinking through that question. And then I was just going to jump in on the other one, because I feel like they're kind of related. Um, I do feel like, um, while we, the zoning is too restrictive in some of our key transportation corridors, I do think it's, uh, there are some areas that are, you know, far from these transportation corridors, that are very rural in nature, um, where the zoning allows theoretical amounts of development that are completely, uh, out of character with anything that's going on around them, and we should, uh, we should look at, and, you know, just because there may be water and sewer in the area, if it's just, if it's really a very rural community, I do, I do think there's some areas that, um, we should, we should lower that or create some incentives for more open space preservation when there's big, big owners going in, but, you know, without naming names, I mean, you know, there's a project in a rural area that you could put a thousand units on a, on a rural country road under our zoning, and that's just, to me, that's just, uh, that's just crazy. So I think we should, I think, I think there's areas we need to be a little bit more flexible, and the areas we probably need to tighten up a lot. And the kind of criteria I would use is, is really sort of proximity to the key transportation corridors, because I think that drives a lot about where more density or, or less density makes sense. In addition to the existing, I think our land use plan does a good job already looking at the topography parts of where density makes sense. I think we're in good shape on that, but, but we haven't done as much to kind of think through, uh, the proximity to transportation and existing commercial uses that I think, uh, we, we need to put a little bit, a little bit more thought into that.
Just to provide some context, her permission, I'm sorry.
Listen, I got it.
Um, we have had, over the past several months, we have had several requests to increase our density standards. The last two that we've had have been R through to go one and a half ton density, right on corridor. So it is something that has, has been repeatedly brought up to us by the building and development community.
Please.
So I have a question that's, um, has actually been asked of me. Um, when we increase density or approve apartment complexes, is part of that study, or can we make, if we move forward to study this, can we make traffic considerations part of the study? I don't know if that is already done, or.
Yeah.
But you're making your money fake.
On a site specific level, is that, is that right?
It is a consideration, it's just not a consideration to us. The, the reason being is, we are not a, a road owner.
Right, it's DOT.
So it would be very difficult for us to look at a project and say, well, we don't think you can handle that, and then have DOT turn around and say, well, it's our road, and we do think it is. So we defer to DOT, DOT ultimately issues the driveway permit, so it is under review.
Okay.
But people get upset because they can't bring it up during our processes. We focus on use, but DOT ultimately says yes, no, or yes with these mitigating factors.
So after we, or the board approves a project, then it's sent to DOT?
DOT usually wants to see an approval from us before they're considering the project, because what they don't want to keep getting is, oh, we've changed the plan a little bit. They want to have a relatively final plan, but a lot of times, depending on the number of units and the density of those units, they will require a traffic engineering study before they'll sign off on that. And they have a lot more power than we do to require turn lanes and, uh, deceleration lanes and, and things that can really help mitigate some of the issues.
Thank you, that's a good question.
Any comments?
Yeah, um, so with the increased density, and you talk about density bonuses, and I'm not very familiar with density, but density bonuses, how, how they work, is that something that's going to add additional cost to the, to the builder? And are they going to have to go up on their, you know, what they charge, you know, to cover it? I mean, you know, how?
Well, I think, I mean, you're not, I mean, the idea I would, I would, you know, speaking favorably would be that, you're not putting any new rules on developers for the commercial areas, let's say, let's just take that for a minute. They're, they're still allowed to do everything they're allowed to do today, no change. But if they wanted to do more, more density on a site than zoning currently allows, we would say to them, yes, you're, you're going to be allowed to do that, but we'd like you to include some percentage of affordable units in that. So, so that would be part of the, you know, public benefit of granting them additional developer rights in that property, would be for them to include some percentage of affordable units in their, in their, in this apartment project or, or, you know, some kind of mixed use project. But if someone says, you know, I'm, I'm just not interested in that, it's just not what I'm doing, they'd still be able to do exactly what they're allowed to do today, which is twelve, up to twelve units.
But they wouldn't be able to do the increased density unless, because, because there may be some projects where the developer is, is doing a great project and the density makes sense, uh, and, and what they're, you know, and, and their rates are reasonable, you know, they're be, they're able to structure something that, that's very reasonable. Um, and I would not want to see, because, I, I mean, if you want to increase density, I wouldn't want to miss out on that, you know, providing those houses, you know, the, the, I wouldn't want to miss out, miss out.
We would, we would never get affordable housing. I mean, if everybody was.
By destination?
Would the percentage be, is that going to be looked at in the study? Of, of what percentage of the units should be affordable, considered affordable?
I think it should be, and I think there could be a range, I mean, maybe you get a certain amount, and maybe you get a fifty percent bonus for ten percent, maybe a hundred percent bonus for twenty percent affordable, I think there could be kind of a mid, you know, a range of options.
With that setting?
And then, and in some places, you know, enough, just going to, I mean, I, I think there are some genuine trade-offs here, but I, I mean, I think that, uh, I agree, we would tend to not give any affordable units if we just gave people this and they didn't have to do anything to get it, they would just, you know, do that. Some places even would say, you know, you have an option where you could, uh, if you want to do a project or you just absolutely can't, uh, the developer doesn't want to do any affordable units, I, I think you could also just say, you know, you could do like a, um, a pay, a fee in lieu, right? So you can say, I'll just, I'll just pay some money and you can put your affordable units somewhere else, and I'll just get the density bonus without it. Some places have even done that, you know, I'd, I'd be open to that, but, um, I think we should do something where at least if they want to get, they want to do a lot more intensity than they're allowed today, that there's some public benefit on the affordable housing side of the ledger as a result of that.
And the key here is it's not mandatory, we're not forcing them, it's a choice they make whether they want to go for this bonus. If you do, here's how you get there.
Yeah, it would be, it would be allowing you to do more, if you just want to stay with the protocols, that's also.
That's your place, you can tell them personally, we'll give you more if you do this.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's right. So, you know, I'm supportive, you know, Ford will have them, all the time.
Any objections to going, uh, starting to go forward with that?
And just the last one is, you may apply, somebody has sewer services extended. We've not had this case, but.
What, not, I'm sorry, what?
I mean, you just, uh, you apply, somebody has sewer services extended, we've not had a case like this, but, I mean, obviously, it's going to happen. At some point, and just.
The difference being is it going to be OU, or is it going to be the, the MSD Service District Blackstone type zoning? So when, when the sewer service is extended, should it turn into, instead of OU, residentially, or commercially zoned areas?
I'd, I'd like for y'all to use your lens and figure out which one's the right one, so. Maybe you can come and come in with the open use, but I would think more likely it's probably one of those others, so that's, that's.
I mean, copy that and correct.
And what about the second part of what Brian was talking about, decreasing the density often?
Uh, yeah, just, I mean, there's a few more thoughts on that, I mean, I think the, uh.
Can you give me an example of that?
Well, I mean, you know, just, uh, I mean, the original, you know, when the, uh, when the Coggins property was brought originally, you know, talking to Josh about it, and, and, you know, there were a lot of things about the, and that project's changed in a way that it didn't require coming in front of us, and that's, it's on its path, uh, the developer can be looking on doing that. And they had the original plans out there, and there were a lot of things about the original plans I liked. I liked some of the kind of integration of different uses, and there were some open space things that were simply good. And when I was talking to Josh about it, I mean, one of the, Josh told me, one of the reasons I think we should probably recognize this is that, you know, the developers, the developers put a thousand units on that property right now, under our current zoning. There's nothing to do about it. Not that anyone would, because it'd probably be a nightmare to live in, right, like, but, but still, the fact that you can put a thousand units on a hundred and eighty acres of land on Farm School Road, to me, is crazy. So I, I think there's just definitely some places where the costs, our rules are so driven by, uh, the density that you can, you can put in place contingent upon water and sewer availability. There's just some rural areas in the county that do have water and sewer, so you can theoretically do that intensity of development, but they're just in areas where really it would be, uh, complete mismatch with, uh, I think, the transportation infrastructure and just the, the character of the, of the, of the area. So I, I feel like we need to look at, look at some of those areas that are, you know, far away from our major transportation corridors and, and just reconsider some of the density that's allowed in those more rural, remote areas, my take.
Does that go by?
And, and I think John's suggestion, the kind of, you know, focusing on some of the bigger tracks, I think that makes sense, that you're not looking at, you know, ten thousand properties around the county, you're looking at, you know, you're looking at some of these larger tracks that, you know, they probably are going to be developed, and that's, that's fine, but you don't, you know, I just think, I, I, right now, I just think our zoning is almost kind of irrelevant, because the ceilings are so high, it's just like, it's almost meaningless to.
But Brian, I think I should start to sign, sign a manor, as, as Josh brought up a little earlier, the road, that's a state road. They would have to ask the state if it would accept that kind of track. If they say no, that, that changes the whole picture.
Interesting, huh?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think they don't ever say no, because on, on any given project, no matter how big it is, is by itself unlikely to say, oh, this road literally can't handle it, right? So the, and that's why I think it's our job to kind of take the bigger picture view and say, you know, in this general area, you know, transportation infrastructure is in here to, to be supportive of and accommodate, you know, larger, more intense developments, that's why I'm in favor of that, of doing, allowing more along the transportation corridors. But in these remote areas, while the DOT on a case by case basis would say yes, 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 um, I think it's our job to kind of think and look at the higher level and say, you know, this is a general area where the roads are small and rural and, and, um, and we should not be, you know, and, and we should not allow it to have a development. That's generally inconsistent with that.
And that goes back to the same thing, with the, and I live in, I am on the state road. The gentleman put a subdivision in, had to follow the rules that the state said, how big that road had to be, to be able to be put, turned over to the state whenever half the properties ended up developing, forty two lots, half the lots were sold. He had to come in and cut different areas of the road back out. And he was so good, he had us all put concrete melboxes, or brick and rock melboxes up, and then we had everybody, but a few of us had to tear them down because they wasn't forty five foot from center line road. But they determined what we had to have for, uh, just forty two, forty two lots in that one development, and then they took over the road. And it had to be done by the developer before they took it over, so, yeah, they do look at a certain percentage of the rates. They had to be so big to turn about that big, they, they laid it all out, and the development had to buy that to be able to get the road to, but then, um, it's a state road.
So now even more importantly, for people that were going to be investing, I mean, I think if they know this ahead of time, we're having to make some of those decisions, then they don't get so far down the road and then they have, and, and you, and he says no. So anyway, I'm supportive of, of doing that, um.
Any other comments or thoughts that you want to do about that? Okay, it is about eleven twenty, we're at stop before, I guess, um.
I may, I may just see the chair and the vice chair for just a moment as we take a break.
Absolutely.
And we, um, with the time sensitivity, we may only get through housing and not, not get to the updates, but we'll put those on an agenda for you.
Okay, so why don't we take about ten minutes, let's go to, try to get back about eleven thirty. We, it's about eleven forty-five. Um, one suggestion, which I agree with, is to try to do the affordable housing, and then maybe have Manny's presentation at a regular meeting, is that okay? What, that are off the board?
Mm-hmm.
Move it on schedule. Okay, well, let's go get started with Bunkin County's Florida House, we touched on that a little bit. Thank you.
Chairman Hahn, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to talk about affordable housing. We all know Bunkin County is the greatest place to grow up and raise a family and ultimately retire, and we're attracting commercial customers for our quality of life and low crime rate. We've got great restaurants, a rich history, interesting architecture, and we're a paradise for adventures. But as we continue to age and grow here, we need to continually monitor the, the housing needs of this community. So the first thing we think about is what makes housing affordable? It's basically the two big factors, the cost of housing and the ability of people to pay for it. So housing cost is typically defined as rent or mortgage plus the utilities, and that being the single largest expense item in a household or family's budget. So when we think about the ability to pay, there's a lot of things that, that sort of go with that. One is the unemployment rate, which at the end of two thousand fourteen was five percent, lower than the state or national average of six point five percent. Ours in two thousand ten was eight point six percent, so it's come down substantially. The other thing we sort of think about is the poverty rate, and that in Bunkin County is, uh, fourteen point seven percent. And with that many people living in, in poverty, affordable housing continues to be an issue. So along with these two things is the area median income. This is calculated by HUD and Centulus yearly, this happens to be a hundred percent of AMI. They, they use the American Community Survey data along with the Consumer Price Index to calculate this. It's broken down by, by the number of people in households. So when we think about affordability and what people can afford, there was a recent study done, um, by the Bowlen Brothers, and I'm going to talk about that a little later. Well, what they, in their survey, they found that the median rent for a two bedroom apartment in this area is nine hundred and sixteen dollars. So we thought, okay, how much does, how much income would it require to afford an apartment costing nine hundred and sixteen dollars? Now, we just saw that the median income for this area is forty four eight, and that's for two people. So we pulled some different salaries from the Employment Community, Employment Security Commission, and while forty four eight, the median for the two people could afford the rent, the two veterans, there's still several occupations. the rent, the two bedrooms, there's still several occupations where they might not be able to, or they would be challenged if they could, or if they were to. So we applied that same scenario to purchasing a home. And, you know, a two-person household could be made up of, of many different combinations. So you think, okay, we use the same, the same occupations, the median income is the same for two people, but to purchase this house, the income would have to be sixty seven, one eighty-eight. So the, the big story here is a one-person income, and even in some cases, a two-person income should be unable to afford the median price home in our area in two fifteen. Cost burden. Cost burden is families who pay more than thirty percent of their income on housing. Severely cost burden is more than fifty percent of their income for housing. So when we look at the cost burden in Bunkham County, in two thousand ten, thirty four point three percent of people were renters and sixty five point seven percent were homeowners. That projection changes a little bit for two thousand twenty, not a whole lot, with a few more people being renters and a few people, or a few less people being homeowners. And, you know, there's several reasons why people would choose, uh, renting over home owning, and, you know, some of that's economy-driven and some of it's choice. So when we look at the number of renters, or the renters that are cost burdened in our area, that percentage is forty four point five, with twenty one point seven being severely cost burden. That's under the state average of forty six percent and twenty three point three percent respectively. And when you look at the homeowners, we've got twenty six percent cost burden and nine point nine percent that are severely cost burdened. That's real close to the state average, too. We're a little above on cost burden for homeowners, uh, there, it's twenty five point seven, and we're still under the severe cost burden. That for the state is ten point one percent. So when we're looking at, um.
Do you want with the renter numbers again, North Carolina?
Uh, forty six percent and twenty three point three percent. So looking at the, the rental stock that's out there, the, this Bowen Group that I'm going to talk about later, they surveyed a hundred and thirteen projects, over twelve thousand units. Uh, ninety one hundred of those were non-subsidized, with twenty nine hundred being subsidized. And what they found was that occupancy rate is ninety nine point two percent, the living vacancy rate of point eight, and in a healthy market, it's four percent. They also found that the median, um, market rates were, were what you see there, studio at six sixty seven, a one-bedroom at eight thirty, two-bedroom, which we talked about earlier, is nine sixteen, and three more bedrooms is a thousand twenty-one. So we also looked at the available housing stock, and this is just a, a snippet of time. This happens to be November of two thousand fourteen, and this was what was on the market at that time. We have a, a diverse stock in the different price ranges, but what sort of sticks out here is you've got about four percent of the available stock less than a hundred thousand. You've got about twenty five percent under two hundred thousand, with fifty percent being under three hundred thousand. And the median price for the available house between two thousand ten and two thousand fourteen was three hundred thousand. So what is the housing gap? So the number of units needed minus the number of units available equals your gap, and it is a little more complicated than that. It doesn't include the cost burden. They, they assume, okay, they're already in a house, there's not a unit needed, but they did consider household growth and, um, substandard house replacement. So the, the Bowen Group that did this study, I mean, they, they looked at our stock, they looked at the substandard housing, and they estimated our household growth to, to be by two thousand twenty-six point seven percent. So when we, we look at what, what they found to be, they projected the, the housing gap to be for our area in two thousand twenty, you see that there's a substantial need below thirty percent for families and, and still a high percent between thirty and fifty percent of area median income. Fewer seniors needing rental housing. When you look at homeownership, the gap shifts. You've got twice as many seniors needing housing, or the gap is going to be with seniors, with the majority of them being in the income level between fifty and less than eighty percent of AMI. So what are we doing about this gap? I pulled up information of the number of permits that we issued in two thousand fourteen. This was for sixteen hundred and forty-three units with, uh, you know, the bulk of them being single-family, but three hundred and ninety apartments, and that's, uh, Bunkham County, Asheville, and Black Mountain.
Can you go back to that slide? Just one quick comment on the, on the, the, look at the, 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 the manufacturing of housing compared to, you know, the most family. Probably there's a higher percentage there than, but it's probably off, you know, it's almost twenty percent to a hundred, you know, it's, it's quite it in the county.
So we wanted to look at and see what the history was on this a little bit, so we looked at three calendar years, two thousand twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and you can see a steady growth in new construction for this scenario. So looking at the, the rental, um, housing stock growth, there are four apartment communities in Bunkham County with five hundred and sixty-two units under, under review. We also have three apartment communities with four hundred and thirty units that have received final approval and, in some instances, under construction. A hundred and thirty-five of those are affordable and two ninety-six are at market rent. The City of Asheville, they have eleven hundred and seventy units, with a hundred and ninety-two units planned and two hundred and sixty under review, and they also have three larger, um, affordable projects going, uh, Greystone with a hundred and eight units with a hundred and twenty, and Eagle Market Place with sixty-two. There's an additional hundred and twenty-one coming to Weaverville off of Bacon Road. So when looking at the, um, subdivision activity in two thousand fourteen, and there were two hundred and eighty-two lots that were approved, five hundred and seven lots and eighteen townhomes under review, and twenty-six additional lots have, um, applied for application. I'd just like to point out, that's, these are projects that we have worked with, um, dentistry with Habitat, and this is workforce housing here on the right. Between two thousand fifteen and two thousand twenty, there's a projected growth, uh, household growth, uh, between the age of sixty-five and seventy-four, that's the largest growth, um, area or age group, with, uh, you know, a big increase shown between fifty-five and sixty-four and over seventy, which supports the idea that we are going to need some more senior-oriented housing. And here are some of the proposed, um, senior housing developments in, in the different areas. So what are we doing? Here's our current programs. The Home Investment Partnership Program, uh, the County Affordable Housing Services Program, and Workforce Housing Program. The Home Investment Partnership Program is a federal loan program that's made available to the county through us being a participant in the housing consortium. We're part of a four-county consortium, Madison, Transylvania, Henderson, and, uh, with Asheville being a little bit. Each year we get approximately one million dollars, but since I've been doing it, it's, it's decreased, um, since two thousand and five. But we are able to do, do a lot of different local activities. There's a twenty-five percent local match required, and the county allocates seventy five thousand dollars every year for these projects. So what have we done with that? Over a five-year period, and Asheville, Bunkham is, is sorted together, a lot of our projects are gathered, so you see that a bulk of the funding has gone toward new rental construction with, we, you know, we, we spread it out, we've got down payment assistance, we've got tenant-based rental assistance, we've got the new construction, um, but we, that's equated to a thousand ABC units. Now, the Affordable Housing Services Program, that, this is Bunkham County money. This is a program that the, the board started in two thousand four. It supports a number of projects similar to the ones before, but many in addition to. This is, these funds are awarded every year, um, by the board or budgeted for this program, and we have a competitive process where applicants apply for the money and projects, uh, go forward from there. So here's what we've done with that money. And again, you'll see a lot of, of funds went toward, toward apartments, and, um, the other thing I want to point out is, um, the tenant-based rental assistance. That money and the emergency repair money, you know, sitting, sitting in our office, those are the calls that we receive the most, most calls about. So, um, that, and that, this is, part of this money is a loan, so a lot of it comes back to the county, so we're able to use that program income, but there's a couple like emergency repair and tenant-based rental assistance that doesn't. The workforce housing program is, um, it was established in two thousand and eight. This is county money also. Applications can be received throughout the year, but, um, it's usually awarded during the Affordable Housing Services time period. It's twenty five hundred dollars a unit, but you can get up to five thousand dollars a unit depending on different add-ons, like if you have multifamily designs or sell to someone under fifty percent of AMI or in disenergy ambition. It's a loan to the developer, it's zero percent for five years, or it can be paid back as each house is sold. It's usually up to five hundred thousand, and it's sold families earn between eighty and a hundred percent of AMI. And I told you, I talked to you about why we did the study and who did the study. So I said we are a part of the, um, housing consortium, so every five years we do a, a needs assessment on each of the different regions, and it's for the consolidated plan. So the Bowen Group was selected by the City of Asheville, and they did a market, um, characteristics of every region and came up with a needs analysis for every region. And here are some of the things that they found for Bunkham. There's a continuing need for multifamily rental units for less than sixty percent of AMI. There's a need for workforce housing, eighty, a hundred percent of AMI, and there are no federal funds available for that. We, we need to continue to find more ways to make housing affordable, and there's a growing need for senior housing. Again, the, the population growth for Bunkham is expected to be six point three, and the household growth, six point seven. Bunkham County leadership has shown a clear commitment to addressing the affordable housing challenges of this area, and we work with private, um, public, nonprofits to sort of tackle this problem. So given that direction, um, we, the staff has recommended the following priorities. Does it provide affordable rental housing for households earning below sixty percent of median income? Coordinate housing development with transportation, jobs, and services. Promote homeownership for low-income households. Incorporate, um, sustainable building practices in the housing and community design. Provide affordable and accessible housing to persons with special needs, including the homeless, formerly incarcerated persons, the frail elderly, persons with mental illness, persons with disability, victims of domestic violence, and help people succeed through supported services coordinated with housing development. Preserve existing housing by prioritizing expanding emergency repair programs, both the preservation efforts to make both rental and ownership housing affordable and preserve long-term affordability. Now, a couple of things I want to point out. The emergency repair, you know, I told you I get a lot of, we can keep seniors in their homes, if we can keep their homes, and what we've found is our emergency repair program goes up to five thousand dollars per household, but a lot of times what you find is a house needs a roof and they need electricals, or five thousand dollars isn't going to do both. So we would like to expand that limit to, to do those two activities. The City of Asheville has something they call a tier two or tier one, where they can go up to fifteen thousand, and they can meet a lot of the, they can meet multiple needs to meet. But seniors want to be in their homes, and this is a program that helps them. The other thing was, where we have, um, the special needs, a lot of that came from, um, this Bowen Group had different community meetings, and a lot of these specific things came from comments from citizens. That's what they felt like the needs were. And the homeownership piece, it's, um, you know, when you see, when you see a need in the community, you can't just put all your eggs in one basket, it's, it's, you, you've got to sort of hit it all. So if, if you move people, if someone's in, you know, rental and they're able to move to homeownership, that just frees up that unit. So these are our proposed priorities, and this is Swan and Noah Group, that's a neighborhood that, that was supported by, by county funds, so, um, as you say, we, we do have a, a housing needs in our community, but as we've shown, we are trying to, to address those needs.
Well, I really appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am.
Really appreciate you taking so much time to be so thorough about all this. And it's, it's been interesting to follow particularly in the, the last, I guess, twelve months, it feels like there's been a lot of, uh, information in the media, there's been a lot of information about affordable housing in the last, and I really believe that, uh, in, in some ways it's nothing new, but I think the trajectory we are on as a community is becoming even more worse. I mean, you know, a less than one percent vacancy rate in, in the, I mean, that's evidently unique in the whole entire country. I mean, we, I mean, I, I think some of these percentages looks like, okay, we're tracking like the, the state, but there, the supply just does not exist that we, that we really need, particularly given the demographic of our workforce and where, where wages are falling and the, and the gap between those, but, so, I mean, I feel like this is our number one need in our community by a one-shot. So I don't, I, I feel great about some of the things that we're exploring based on this morning's conversation in terms of land use, but I just would like to see if there's other strategies and approaches that people might be, um, thinking about or interested in, um, because I, I feel like it's all, it's all, it's on people's minds in a big way, this point, and I'd like us to, um, continue what we're doing, but really expand, expand what we're doing as well. And it, it could be, you know, as, as simple as increasing, I mean, our budget allocation to our workforce housing pool of money, but there could be some really interesting partnerships that we, you know, you know, look for, provided, sector. we, you know, look for, provided sector, as well as some of the municipalities and think about, you know, okay, what are the things? Because there's not a golden, there's not a golden answer to this. There's not just one. And if we ever think that there's just one, you know, we've lost the conversation from the very beginning. So we've got to be approaching this on a lot of different fronts. So anyway, I'm very interested in this, I'm very concerned about, you know, our young people. I didn't even know it'd be concerned about seniors and now I'm worried about them. So I just wanted to articulate that, an urgency that I feel, and I know one, you've mentioned to me in passing, that I guess when this Bowen report got some, you know, Ashville sometimes press, that, you know, our bond folks even were asking like, what's the deal with that disconnect? So it's a really important thing, and I'd like us to see about things in leadership and addressing the issue, understanding that it's not a simple answer.
Also, not to, it's like we're fighting against each other. TDA chamber is spending all this money to get tourism dollars here, the support staff of that can't afford to live here. And then when TDA talks about building the transportation system to get the support staff for Buncombe County, how to help the infrastructure here rather than kind of live in Buncombe County, that's maybe the opposite of what we should even be thinking about. And I know there was some talk in the legislature about raising the room tax and some of that going to affordable housing, I don't know where that will end up. But, you know, we're working, in a sense, we're doing all this to encourage hotels, tourism, but yet the people that are the backbone of that, we're setting up a situation, they can't live here. So to me, we've got to work more with TDA to fix that. I mean, I don't know how much TDA has spent outside of the city, but...
It goes back to the same thing. All, you know, we needed a lot of people when you went back to the senior dealership. They didn't have, I was, I saw this tax office when we met up on the tax rights. And the gentleman walked in and talked to Mr. Roberts and told him what we're doing in the tax and hospital. Home is paid for and everything's well there. But he looked at Mr. Roberts and, you know, and he said, I need a little break and then figure out how to make payments on my taxes. So, you know, I look at the seniors in there too. They've been here, they own their home, they want to stay in, but now they're having to make payments on their property tax to stay in homes paid for. So, you know, that's, people need help in certain areas, and you've got a big list of them there, but, you know, you have to pick amongst what you want to pay in the issue. My idea is, we have to figure out how to give something back. There have been gentlemen back when we were in the city, Mr. Mary, who looked at and he said, "Mr. City, I financed my home for 30 years in West Asheville. I've got it paid for, now pay for it again in teen, just in property taxes." So, and that's long-term regard. You know, it's probably worse than that today, and these people end up on fixed income. We got to help them, yeah, I agree helping people, but we still have to help the people that helped ourselves and helped the ladies they are in that area for the property tax.
I think the beautiful thing about, you know, linking arms with the product sector and other, you know, local government entities, is that in the development of affordable housing, it feels like tax tax, right? Because we're not, it's, all those developments are paying us back. So in ways, in our own best interest, to think about this type of investment, because we will see a return to the bottom line. And again, as you expand the base, the more budget got paid into the tax base, you know, the easier it is going to be to hold a line of taxes. So I think that's a really unique benefit of this public need that we have in focusing attention on that, so.
I'd love to, I mean, I, you know, I definitely share the concern about the scope of the problem, you know, the urgency around it. You know, part of the other, I don't know if this report or all of the other reports, but I know it's, people talk about it. There's kind of good news and bad news in that in Asheville and Buncombe County, if I remember the numbers correctly, there's actually been more new affordable homes built in our county than in any other county, including, you know, Raleigh, Charlotte, these communities that have three or four times, five times the people. So we've actually been, you know, we, you know, the private sector builders, the nonprofit builders, like, we've actually been doing a really good job in terms of creating a lot of new affordable priced homes compared to everybody else in our state. But the bad news is just that the scope of the demand is so much more acute here that, I think Hollywood's right, that the numbers were shit. We're still, the problem's gotten worse over the last five or 10 years, not better, even though I think there's been, you know, this has been a priority. This is, you know, we're not the first people to start talking about it being a priority and a lot of the work's been done, but just the numbers getting right now, we're not winning it. So I'm definitely interested in seeing what we can do to explore strategies that will help us just get more, get more units out there on the ground. I mean, we, you know, and all of these, all these different areas are great, I mean, there's a need, there's a need in a lot of different areas. But, you know, and this is something I've just kind of recently started, even become aware of, but I think it may be something that's worth exploring. I know that on the multifamily part of the equation, one of the most important strategies that we, you know, communities across the state do this, or in the country, but there's this investment tax credit for multifamily developers who agree to keep their rates at permanently affordable levels for, I guess, 30 years, right? The Lytec program, I think it's a 30-year commitment to keep the rents affordable long-term. And, you know, and a lot of the, you know, important projects that we've seen happen in the last few years are being planned now, like that Given's estate project you mentioned, and the Larchmont project on, in Maryman Avenue, and in the Glen Rock Apartments, all these were all developed through that tax credit policy. And so that's great, but my understanding is that realistically Buncombe County is only going to give one, maybe two of those projects a year, that there's just, it's a finite amount of funding and it's competitive around the state, so you're only going to get so much. So maybe 60 or 80 apartments a year can get financed through that program. But I've heard some people in the development industry talking about another strategy that looks at the, another tax credit program, it's a lower amount of taxation, it's a 4% tax credit rather than this higher tax credit that the Lytec program runs through, but that it's, it's not capped. So it's not, it's a non-competitive process, so any developer who meets the criteria will qualify for it. So I wonder if, you know, we should be looking at some of these other national housing development incentives and maybe trying to access some different resources that we traditionally bought after. So, I don't know much about it, but definitely supportive of exploring every avenue to help us get more units out on the ground, you know, in the next few years. And using, and thinking that we can leverage on our, you know, leverage whatever investments we make, so if there is some other program like that, where a dollar, we put in, gets us two or three dollars from, you know, leverage from the private sector, then we're not going to be able to do it by ourselves, clearly.
No, we're not. I mean, that's the takeaway, is that we're not going to fix this problem unless we have the private sector, you know, invested in it. But, you know, folks are talking about it constantly in terms of job recruitment, I mean, like, this is a barrier to bringing some businesses to our community, is just the housing stock, so.
Do you, you feel like we have, we go after all the grants we could? And I know it's a shrinking pool, so it's a, it's hard to get smaller and smaller, but do we have staff to do what we need to do, to go after everything we might be able to get?
Everything we hear about, we research and follow through on. And it has been, it is a shrinking pool, and, I mean, even the funding that we have, the funding amounts, like I said, with home, I think when I started doing this, I want to say the pool's around 1.6. I mean, you were there, Paul, was it about 1.6? And now, this year, I actually think it's going to be under 900,000. And that's four counties and the city of Asheville going after that money.
Well, I'm, you know, I think y'all, you know, I agree with Commissioner Prior, you know, prioritizing, and I agree with Fisher. There is, it's not, there's not several, if you put more money over here, you got it solved. So I know it's a huge, huge problem, a lot of technicals. What would you say, if we just, if we did, if we said, okay, we're going to give more money this year, where would you put?
Oh, wow.
Or how would you allocate, or what strategy would you have about, you know, what? Because one of the things, you know, like, it seems like I remember that Buncombe County, this may be a little bit off, but it may not be, the number of assisted living, don't we have more assisted living rooms than anybody in the state, or have a, abnormally, maybe this is more...
More beds than anywhere in the state.
Including Charlotte Rock in Asheville. So while we did the units, the good news, the bad news, that Frank told us about, you know, we also have this huge, and I don't know how they fit into the affordable, maybe they're, the fact they're there, they don't count, or they have already been, they have adequate facilities, but it's really out of whack for Asheville to have more than Charlotte Rock.
50% of the cost is county, wherever those residents come from. I mean, that's not necessarily an area I would promote.
Yeah, no, it's not, we're running out on that.
You know, the projected, that projected number for senior housing is not based on, you know, seniors moving into our area, it's us getting older. So we're here and we're just getting older.
But more and more of the money around that, to support, I mean, I, I mean, that's where the fiddle really goes versus moving.
I mean, to me, unless we really aggressively address creating workforce housing, all the things we're doing to take jobs, I mean, to me, one thing goes above the other.
I believe that the city is thinking about, maybe if I can, doing a community forum on workforce housing, affordable housing, this is spring and the summer, maybe the summer. So I don't know a lot about that, but I'm wondering if we, you know, approach them and be maybe a co-partner in that and see what we can do to engage, you know, folks in our community to participate. Because basically what I think, we, the idea is that it's a bigger problem than local government could ever, they could fight out of. So, and I think the private sector would be, you know, obviously first and foremost of the initiatives, so.
Well, to answer your question, Chairman Kent, you know, I, the only thing I really have to base that on is what I hear in the community, the need is. The other thing is to look at the applications that we receive for the Affordable Housing Services Fund over the years, and, you know, we, the request was X and, you know, the amount we had was X, and the shortfall over that five years was right at 2 million. You can't, while that's a good indicator, and in some ways it's not, because there's always a large percentage of funding requested for these tax credit projects. They need to see local support from several different groups to get those tax credit projects. So they usually, you know, their application to us is usually, you know, a rather large, and the more support they get from local government or from local funds, the more points they get. So, but to answer your question, like I said, when I sit in my office and answer questions, it's emergency repair and tenant-based rental assistance. I can't tell you the calls I get saying, "I'm a single parent, you know, I have two children," or, "I'm a married, I'm married, I have two children and my husband lost his job and we're, you know, we're too much behind on our end, you know, we just need to get caught up. He has a job now, but we're behind." A lot of those stories, a lot of those stories. And emergency repair, I still believe if we can keep people in their home and keep them safe in their home...
And it saves the housing stock, too.
Right, right.
Can you put that slide up again about the calories?
AMI or the...
The one where it's broken out, what, each particular...
Questions?
Yeah.
That's what you said.
And the report is the rental too, that means they're both...
Yeah.
Ooh, I'm sorry. And the, but the key, what the public state...
Is the 916 a month Asheville City, Buncombe County, or combined average?
That's Buncombe County, including the city of Asheville.
Combined average, okay.
So, have you guys, are you guys, have you guys heard about this other kind of lower level of tax credit?
I have not.
Again, I initially just thought it was just a little, I've heard about it and I asked him to hand me out this, and, so, again, definitely don't have tons of background in this, but my general sense is that, you know, that tax credit incentive that's out there for these kind of developments is not something that the development community or the local governments in our area have been looking at for a couple of different reasons, my sense is. One is that there's been such a big focus on trying to get the tax credit real estate projects done that provide the much deeper subsidies for, you know, 60% below median income for like 30 years, or, you know, those are the developments that provide the most benefit, right? So there's been so much attention in the development community and the city and the county around helping get those across the finish line, and, you know, and they're great. You know, so for that reason, that's going to be the program most of the development industry's focused on. So, and I definitely don't think we should, you know, reduce our support for that, but I do think that, I do think this other national program that's out there to encourage affordable developments, although they're not as affordable, they're not as deeply affordable, is something we should look at because, you know, I mean, there's a huge number of people who are at that 70, 80, you know, 85% level, I mean, they're working people, they may not be making the median incomes in the community, but they're here, they've got it, they need a place to live, and these, you know, these numbers right here show that it's really hard.
That's really hard.
It's really, really hard. And so if we can get a few more of those kind of developments done, I think it can make, you know, it can make a real difference over the next, you know, over the next few years. So I'd love for us to explore that, figure out, what does that financial model look like, what would it take from, you know, the different municipalities, the county, to, I don't know, to make some of those projects really pencil out the community as well?
So when you look at this right here, you could take it and just report to myself just a minute, that they're, seeing all these, these are the people that in their 30 years have paid and asked for it, they've faster dealt on, for these people that have left. Tens of thousands probably in this county. And to Commissioner's point over there, that's, that is difficult to look at, but that's what they made. So your number three, to promote, you know, affordable homeownership in county, gives these people a path, a path to equity, gives them a path out of debt, and an opportunity to be able to do other things. And to have, you know, most people, you know, the desire of having a home is just way up there, you know, in one of their life goals. And to be able to promote that in Buncombe County, homeownership is something, you know, we should do. When you look at these numbers and become more acquainted with options of factor bill, then you'll see that those two will mesh together very well in a way to provide, for these people that lived here a long time that don't want to go nowhere else. You know, they want to, they become firefighters, they become teachers and nurses and stay here, and want to stay there for a long time. Happen to already probably live on property, so they... so they're not wanting to go anywhere, so, you know, it's good that we're looking at all these options, and I'm glad, glad to be here.
I don't, I don't disagree with that observation, but I would, I'll also say that those are the people that we've also supported in Larchmont, in Lynn Rock, you know, and so, so it's not like we've, you know, we've been facilitating affordable housing in other ways, so.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we're not, I'm just saying, well, let's, let's look at, look at factor homeownership, for those that want that, you know, in all its form.
But I don't think it's fair to say that these groups of people have been turned down because they want to get a manufacturer.
With all due respect, I did not, I did not say that.
But there was an implication.
No, there wasn't. Number three on your list was, all the way in the back, was promoting affordable homeownership, and I'm glad to see that on there, that we're, we're doing that, and all the other states.
You know, I, I agree that too, I, I, I don't think I could sleep with myself if I didn't say, you know, sleep at night. That, kind of just that principle just held up without, you know, some scrutiny and some understanding of it, is also what sent so many people into foreclosure when the bottom hit out. I mean, we just got on this path, like, everybody, you know, needs to own, own no matter what, and.
The amount of, yeah.
Credit scores being, you know, and all these other things, and so, so I, I, I am also about trying to help folks, you know, with the American dream, but we, we cannot do it at all costs. So that's where I feel like there's got to be this whole spectrum of possibilities that people can move through it, because not everybody's ready to jump in the house, and we don't do anybody a service setting them up for failure, so, anyway, now I can, now I can sleep with whoever else is here.
I'm glad you said it, because I was going to say, so you speak to.
Well, I'm not, that's, that's not my antenna, and I feel like.
No, I don't hear, I didn't hear you say.
No, no, but, but to, but to say that everybody's dream is to own their own.
No, 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 I did not say that. I said, we should provide a path to homeownership, to promote for people that have a path to equity, for those that choose that, and, and all its form, and obviously, we don't want anyone to take on anything that they could not be able to, to afford, and to be able to, long-term, be able to own it. One thing I say about affordable housing is, a lot of people go into the homes, and they got one child, and, and with two bedrooms, and you got this affordable home that's worth a lot more money than actually what they have to put in, and they outgrow the home. Well, they sell that home for what it's worth at that point, so that home becomes unaffordable, so we're back there doing the same thing we do, over and over, you know?
I think most, I think most of the groups that are involved in that, you know, building that, have provisions where if someone sells the house, they have to return the money, so it's reinvested in affordable.
But it's a portion, it's a portion, it's not, it's a long-term part of it, it's a small portion of it, because families outgrow them, and everybody in the lawn try to get every dime they can out of it, and, you know, and I, and I, you know, there's different areas, I think, that we can all look at this perspective, and, and make it work.
I mean, part of, I guess what's happening with the senior stuff is that, I mean, is that the seniors in some ways are outgrown, or just have a different type of housing need, as they get older as well, and so maybe, anyway, so.
Although, although I think, I mean, you know, I like to question that, in that, I mean, I know there are different, some developments about build senior housing, right, but there's a lot of seniors who, they need an affordable apartment, or where, whatever it is they're living in, but they don't necessarily want to live. I mean, they want to live, just live in a regular, I mean, around people of different ages and stuff, so in a way, if you provide affordable apartments, I mean, seniors will be part of who lives there, so we don't necessarily have to only build houses for seniors to help meet that need, right, and if we build good developments that are affordable price, seniors will be a big part of that, so.
Well, and another thing for seniors, when we do those emergency repairs, when they see a need for, if they go into a home and see a need for, you know, a variation of the bathroom, or some grab marks and stuff like that, they're able to do that, too.
Right.
Right, 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 right.
And, and then the homeownership piece, I, I do want to say, Mountain Housing does a good job of educating and going through and scrutinizing and doing their due diligence. Since I've been doing this, I don't remember one that has foreclosed, so, so they're good to, to do, they're homework on that.
So we've talked about workforce housing and affordable housing, and sometimes they get lumped together. What's, will you, I think I read recently in an article the difference, but will you just kind of quickly go through the differences?
Affordable housing is usually, programs that are available are for people who are less than 80% of AMI. Workforce housing is, is that other group that's more 80 to 120, ours is 80 to 140. So, you know, slightly above 100% of AMI that, that I showed at the beginning.
Are we doing better in the affordable range, or the workforce range? Where, where's the greatest need?
Well, this study showed that the greatest need was in workforce housing. We've actually only had one developer use our workforce housing money, and he actually did an awesome job. Those houses sold quickly, but, you know, we just haven't had, haven't had anybody, haven't had a developer, you know, come to us and say, we have this project.
Do we know, is, does anyone have any ideas why there isn't more interest in the, meaning the workforce needs? I don't, I'm, I'm just curious.
I think demand is just so high out there that developers can build, you know, the market rates up, and it's all rented up like that, so why sell on lower price for it?
It goes back to another thing, develop, local developers, he's got apartments, he's going to add eight apartments, before he sets a shuttle on the ground, it's going to cost him $20,000, so that's $2,500 a apartment, 40%. So, we got a problem with it.
Hey, Bunkham County, why would it cost that much? Why would it cost that much?
You have to talk to planning department.
Yonkers cost $20,000?
Other than permit costs, $5,000 for water runoff, and this is just apartment, for eight apartments, which is, he's got apartments already, and the total package is $20,000.
Except for permits and stormwater and all of the stuff.
But that's $2,500 for a six-month rental.
Per apartment. I guess my takeaway would just be, I mean, I just would like to kind of continue to have the staff sort of bring us options, you know, what are the different, you know, as David was saying, if we were to reinvest additional funds, like, what are the different, you know, what are the different options, what can be, what can be done, you know, increase the units built up every year, and, just so we understand what the different, you know, what are the, you know, talk about tools, what would the different tools be, what would the different initiatives be that can help with this? I mean, I, and I hear you, I hear you on the home repair, and I've always felt like those funds are incredibly, you know, valuable, really do a lot of good for people, but ultimately, to me, if I think about trying to kind of move the needle on this, to me, ultimately, in the, in the long run, I feel like, we do just have to have, because I feel like the population's just going to continue to grow, you know, right, we're going to have growth, people are going to move here, and if the housing stock itself doesn't, doesn't grow, and if more of that's not priced in these, you know, somewhat more affordable ranges, this problem is just going to get worse and worse. And to me, if I had, if they my highest priority, you know, what can we do to, you know, incentivize within the market, more units being built that are, you know, affordably or workforce priced, to me, that's, that's my number one, and I'd like to know how to make a difference on.
And, and to talk to the emergency, you know, people that are paycheck to paycheck, one little thing, we're all concerned about homelessness, you know, one, one car repair, losing a job, life happens, and then they're on the brink, so, yeah.
We did, we, we did.
And so what, so what do we currently do?
In half, half of the building.
For affordable.
If it's, if it's affordable.
What about our, the other permits that we issued, like we have a stormwater, or just, so just building permits?
We don't have stormwater currently, but stormwater currently.
We don't have to.
But, yeah, it's.
It's not, so the fee is just one fee, the people aren't, like, buying a fee, first stormwater, and a fee.
Or it has to be one.
There's, there's, sure, sure.
So should we, should we love the thing?
Yeah, I guess that's my, my question, and I might not be following, but is there, would that be a possibility, is to do, is to carry the rebate for affordable workforce over to the other areas of fees?
Talk about the budget process, sure.
No, I think we're talking big money, you know, but.
Apparently, I didn't even know we had stormwater fees.
Well, I know it's a nice, it's a nice, it's a nice, but, you know, that will be, you know, a little bit of.
I mean, it's just like a, a four months, stormwater is speaking $300.
I heard you say that, that's what we're talking about, this trying, is like, I mean, not get away with it, because there's a reason why we have fees, and, you know, to pay for operations of our, our county, and also to get, you know, anyway, so, but, because I'm not about getting rid of fees, but I think if there's a way that we can.
And people are doing workforce, you know?
So, I mean, I appreciate you bringing up the point, because maybe.
You just workforceed, that's, that's consistent of a developer that wants to put something under accounting.
And then this is where you and I part ways, because I think we.
People can afford to go rent, so that's cutting people out that, that can afford to go rent, that we want to try to take people and make sure that we're taking care of them. I want to take care of those people, too, I want to take care of the builders in this, this town, to go along with it, just like she said, they've had one person step up and do workforce housing in Bunkham County, correct?
But that's what Holly and I were saying, if we can make it reductions, and, you know, more for them, to get them, so they're more.
Very good, well, I'm really, I really appreciate y'all, you know, putting this forward, and letting us look at it, eyeball to eyeball here, and that's what we're doing.
Okay, it is quarter to one, kind of in between, you may have one that we can.
Well, I actually have something I need y'all to discuss, you know, we have put off the nonprofit funding presentations, because we have that, whatever, and we need to get that rescheduled, and you can, if you look at your calendars, there is a fifth Tuesday in March, if that was something that's available. On the 7th, we have a regular meeting, which is having to be a pretty good meeting, in terms of topics, and then you have Fire Chiefs on the 21st of April, so we're looking for that date, it's about a four-hour process, four to four and a half hour process to hear from everybody.
I'm not here if it takes me more.
You're not here on the 31st. We could blend it somehow with the Fire Chiefs on the, on 4/21, we try to stick with your Tuesdays, because usually you've got your Tuesday schedule.
I'm going to be awake to that, that Tuesday, but, but what if we made.
Just for the record, we're not traveling, we're not traveling to that, just for the record.
I just wanted to come take, you know, I thought we were going to go visit some factories.
We might do that.
So is there any chance of doing it in conjunction with your meeting with the Fire Chiefs?
So we make it earlier?
We can make it anytime today.
Do we do it at the same time?
I'm on each side.
Well, it's kind of the Tuesday, 4/21.
And the Fire Chiefs are at 4:30.
Yeah, so you wanted to start by, right at lunch and make it.
Yeah, we could, yeah.
How long did you have left there for, Kevin?
Four and a half hours, I think.
Four and a half hours.
You're going.
But two breaks, three breaks, I think.
I'm good with that, so we could start at noon on the 21st with the nonprofits.
Yeah, I have a court case, but I'd say go ahead and have, it's going to be real hard to find the time, I, I, I could be here probably about once, so let's go ahead and do that, I think that's, that's fine.
We did prioritize, so the less you ask for, the earlier you are in process.
And incentivize.
That's a much.
It started, you say noon?
At noon on the 21st?
I said April, April.
April.
And then we'll follow that with the Fire Chiefs at 4:30. I don't think the Fire Chief meetings will necessarily be long, it's just, they've never had an audience with, with the commissioners, and yet they come in every year and ask us to.
We are set to be here. First order of it.
Yeah, so we can be here if you're willing to, new to, on channel, because you're not even sessioning.
And we will be on the nonprofits, and I don't want me to read the people film that, so we can show it on the channel, we're talking more about that.
All right, sounds good, so everybody's got down, 4/21, 12 noon, and this means we can, okay, what, do you have any business?
We've got it, 15 minutes, if you want any more.
We're going to answer questions, but it's up to you all.
Is everybody good with that?
I don't know.
I'm really going to sit down here, but you can.
I have no idea, I, she didn't show me, but.
May I take a minute to zip the connection? That's more than I can do.
Jerry, you been napping over here? Just a quick, and we are the Family Justice Center, as well as the Bi-Hidro Health Urgent Care Center, and we've certainly talked through what a family justice center is, you've seen the data, and how widespread the issue is in our community, both from law enforcement and Child Protective Services perspective.
This man?
Yes.
Wait just a second, I think, Commissioner Raul handled it.
I'm sure.
She's already signed it. Oh, oh, that's right, she is.
She's saying part of it.
Everyone.
Really driven by the fact we just don't have the infrastructure currently in our community, through either the government sector, nonprofit sector, and even the man. And really looking at what's the cost of the community, this, we took some national data, and then, and then it got extrapolated on the state level, and then we did that down to Bunkham County level, and it really helps to find who some of our partners are, seeing now a lot of the cost is physical health, with a hospital or the healthcare system, as well as the judicial system and courts. Really focused on what the system response is to victims, be they adults or children, and the number of times required to travel, to be interviewed, and search for supports or services, and it's one of the commissioners said to me early in the planning process, really it's about taking the dollars we already invest and coordinating in a more strategic way. This is our current investment of county dollars across the system that's designated for supporting domestic violence. Now, I make my point to you because some of that has changed as we've moved along. Part of that includes a student evidence-based offender, batter, or treatment program. North Carolina Council on Women has asked us to pilot that program, no other community in the state is offering that, they offer anger management program, but there's no evidence to show its effectiveness, so this leads us into an evidence-based treatment program. Also put a service navigator, a case manager in the public defender's office, to help ensure those individuals follow up with their treatment, and get into the services they need. This is who sits in the Family Justice Center complex, you have law enforcement and NDA, child welfare components, your nonprofit partners, and then specialized healthcare intervention, admission, help. Why Woodford, that's one of the questions y'all have gotten, and while we looked at Woodford, and it was actually a commissioner who had more foresight than I to say, what about Woodford? But it currently houses about 200 of our social works staff, we already made substantial investments in the renovation of it, and if you look at best practices for family justice centers across the state and nation, we visited many of them, their house with government, in, your house jointly with government and nonprofit partners, really expended a lot of resources in that building around security measures, have full-time law enforcement there, it's a result of the SS's presence, have all of the fingerprint readers and security measures, IT systems built in, and this is no simple task, it was already plum for exam runs, because the health center used to sit there. Close proximity to the court system. Close proximity to the courts is a huge issue for family justice centers, and then it has a meeting garden that you see outside for children and families. It's a one-stop campus within the corridor of other services, um, that these individuals would access, so that, it was a strategic decision, although, um, clearly not an easy one, um, for the commissioners to make. What I really want to talk, just a few minutes, a little different approach today, is what drives us to want to invest so much in this system, and there's a lot of scientific evidence that says children who experience an adverse experience, and I'll talk about what some of those are in a minute, you really see it play out throughout their life in terms of disruption, neurodevelopment, cognitive, social, educational skills, adoption of health risk factors, we'll see what some of the research says about that, much more likely to have to, to develop chronic disease, become disabled, and die early, all around that trauma you experienced. So you really want to develop a response system that supports adaptive behaviors versus additional stress. I love this one. Um, I wish they might give it to me in graduate school. Here's an easy picture of all the impacts of an adverse childhood experience. They can be the things you know well, children who are sexually, the soft, emotionally abused or relatively physically abused or relatively, but also living in a household with an adult who has untreated mental health issues, or an incarcerated relative, or seeing any parent treated violently in the home, substance abuse by parents, and even divorce. Now, lots of children experience those. What's different about how they respond is how many experiences they have, how supportive their environment is, and how resilient, both they are and their sisters for this. Some of the behaviors we see, and, um, lots of scientific evidence supports this, in children who have experienced adverse experiences, is they are less likely to be physically active or healthy, more likely to smoke, alcoholism, drug use, they miss work more often. We see these same things on the physical health components, they have a much, you can, we, we have the research to show in each of these areas, the increased likelihood they'll experience these things. My point is, how, how effectively we intervene with them really is a cost-off, cost offset for future public funding, that supports their needs as they grow into adulthood, married, and have children of their own. So what this, what, what a family justice center really is about is who enters that system is likely experienced in a toxic level of stress, really seeing it in their behavior, seeing it in their physical health. A family justice center provides a supportive environment, we can't change the experience happening, though all we do is, is can respond with supports that allow them, first, to learn to tolerate what's occurred to them, and to eventually be able to take that in a positive way and move forward. I really want to say that because I think I missed that in some of the earlier presentations. That's why the model, the development, is taking so long and is so important. Now, if we only address the unhealthy, cucking behavior, we're just dealing with a symptom and not the root cause, and we have to, we have to look at our own systems, be they law enforcement, or courts, or DSS, and talk about how do we do that intervention in a way that helps that child or adult victim move to a more tolerable and then a healthy level of stress. This is an actual design of the building, um, which is, might have at moments caused toxic stress for me and you all, but, but really, the, the, just to talk through it, the yellow, we are one of the few models in the nation that will combine a family justice center with a child advocacy center. There, this is segregated space, these are for victims of child sexual and physical abuse, they have access to specialized therapies and supports, case management, physical examinations, that's available twenty-four-seven. This is an area we'll partner with mission on the funding of. When you move into this next section, this is actually the family justice center, you come, they will actually come through the lobby as you come in here, you'll be greeted by a navigator or a support person, you move into these friendly den areas, very safe environments. Law enforcement and DSS will come to you here in these safe environments, you'll never be asked to go to those multiple other agencies. And then you have CAPS and physical legal services, our voice and help aid all those supportive agencies who actually deliver the services, and you have therapists on site, trauma specialized therapists on site for both children and adults. The, um, the, this middle section are your sane nurses or forensic nurses from mission, which means twenty-four-seven law enforcement, or victims will be able to come here, and this is where the rape kit or physical exam will actually happen versus having to go and travel to the E D. Um, that, that's a huge step. Now, clearly, if there are physical, acute, health acuity issues that require the E D, that's where they'll go, but a much safer environment where you immediately move from the exam into this cocoon of supportive services, again, reducing that toxic stress. The blue, um, is separated, but is, um, some social work services, and then aside going up where you see the darker blue, is where law enforcement, the A P D, sheriff's department, drop-in for all our municipalities, drop-in office for the district attorney, and the DSS forensic social workers sit together. There's evidence rooms built into that, um, lots of the structure they need just to do their general functions, really need, and rape kit happens here, detective can either do the interview remotely or listen to the interview remotely, done by the same nurse or the pediatrician, and then the evidence can be prosecuted.
What was the number of times the domestic violence victim had to give a story?
It's a minimum of eight.
Eight times she's got to relive that or give.
And, you know, one of your biggest challenges in prosecution of, um, of child abuse is developmentally, children won't tell us, I mean, they can't remember the same level of detail again and again. So those will happen here by a forensic interviewer, all of the other players are required to interview that child, if DSS is a forensic interviewer, then law enforcement, the VA, the pediatrician will be listening remotely or via laptop, lots of technology challenges for teen, which his staff's been great dealing with, and that, that victim, be that an adulterer child, never have to experience that interview again, it's recorded and becomes the base evidence. I'm so proud of this one, I gotta say. Um, though not necessarily the designer, but that's not been so much fun. But, that's where we are in terms of the physical layout of the building. Um, any questions about that? Anything I missed, I'm, I want to do a move fast.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're about to, one, you're about to.
Sure, sure, this is the law enforcement.
Okay, that's actually, so you're about to describe the part to the, the pop section? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So this continues to be the tax office, and tax is building out a little bit, this renovation to provide both an enclosed space, they could say the current lobby is very loud for them, because they have an open cabinet, so both sides of the lobby will become much more closed, but, um, they're, they'll build out, and then the other side is actually, in the blue is your forensic social workers, and in the purple, A P D and sheriff's department detectives, then there's also a drop-in office for the district attorney, and a drop-in office for municipal partners. So, if the commitment we're making to our municipal partners is, as victims understand this exists, if I come in and report my child's been abused, they're not going to say to me, "You live in Black Mountain, go to the Black Mountain Police Department." We'll conduct the initial, uh, take the initial report for them, Black Mountain or Woodfin, Wheterbill can use this space, um, to come to the victim and do the interviews on site.
Maybe that's the whole, that'll be for, that's the whole lecture board area.
Yes.
This is the field we love to worry here?
Pop part of it.
Yes.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
Don't confuse me, I'll stay. So you'll come in, um, to, to be greeted by, I mean, there's still a lot of discussion about nonprofits and models, they've seen the friendly face who'll actually walk you to the services, so there'll be no point where a victim's isolated in that environment. That's just, um, another look at it in a little more detail of all the nonprofit partners will sit in there and what their space will look like, and what that floor will look like for them. And in the meeting garden, um, this gives you real detail of the child space and the level of services that a family will be able to receive right there, and then there's an outdoor space we're very proud of that our parks are, designed for us, that we use for DSS child and family visits, that will be available to these families.
That center section is going to be really hard to access.
At what?
Center section. Sorry, I have an issue. There're no doors.
Yes.
No, in the middle.
Yeah, there's a side door, but for security reasons, you don't really. There's a door here, see that break? So after hours, they can access, or if the sane nurse or law enforcement wants to bring a victim in, they can come right in a separate door, the one you see facing that, is that what you mean?
No, no, go on, move on, I'll tell you later.
Well, I want to fix it, goodness.
No, it's not a, it's not.
It's not true, and I'll hear about it, so I want to fix it. You know, you're worse than me at, at directions.
We just don't show doors right here in this section, there's no doors into those rooms.
Oh, well, they do have doors, that's a really good point. If they're a traumatic, if you can find the door. That's a really good point, but there are, there will be doors. But thank you for pointing that out in front of the meeting. If I told you how many hours we've spent on this and we missed doors, that's what I'm saying. We are applying for two major grants and also working on other grant potentials. Um, y'all are aware, we're also looking at, uh, a behavioral health program, the facility that we own, that the provider is not, um, they have not taken since two thousand nine the option to purchase that property, they're a statewide program versus a local program. That would be money we'd have to reinvest in the mental health or behavioral health support, so that would be another funding source for this. But applying for two very large grants to support this, we're being very careful to not apply for grants that our nonprofit partners are applying for. We're really looking at the, the side that's specific to government, and that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions, for y'all, I'd be happy to answer all those questions.
How are, um, people going to find out about this?
There'll, we, there will be a lot of promotion materials, but because the nonprofits will actually move there, they'll also spread the word. Um, if you visit other family justice centers, your bigger issue is, how do you plan for the walk-in traffic?
Right.
Of people who might not choose to walk in any of those other sites, but will walk in this central site. And I don't want to miss the point that as we do design on this, help makes them design which allows them to double their shelter capacity, if they move the office side in here, they can double their actual shelter capacity for victims.
Do we have a potential?
We got, that's the only one we can use.
Um, we think, you know, it's, the behavioral health side at, um, across the street, our assessment center will move to, build more and open twenty-four-seven, not for all the components of this system, and I'm not going to go through all of those, but, oh, I know what those, well, there's the components, but the twenty-four-hour walk-in will be available July one. When they move out, I think Greg thinks it's about ninety days, for, you know, a hundred and twenty days for them to renovate that space. When that space is renovated for register, then we'll begin renovations on, um, on Woodfin, and that's probably about ninety days for part of it, so we'll be in it, we'll be cut the ribbons next year. And y'all, we are moving on schedule with this. Um, we'll have, as I said, twenty-four-seven access, both on a clinical, um, screening as well as behavioral health, we'll have access to recliners and the family support components as early as July. The, the, the last piece of this model to come up will be, um, the, the actual additional sixteen beds for children in the old Neil Darwins, but we will not lose capacity at any point, because we'll still have the sixteen beds that exist at Neil Darwins for adults, and we won't take those down until those beds move across the street to three fifty-six. I don't know why this is that one, maybe it's been, it's been a little while ago, we'll try and be there. Um, but we're on schedule with it, lots of planning related to this, a lot, the partners are all at the table related to it, um, and, and again, the state had, state awarded three of these grants, and has said publicly that ours is the strongest partnership between government and hospital, and the behavioral health system, as well as the physical health system, so I feel really positive about where we're going with this.
I think the one, the one slide, yeah, and I've said to this thing a few times, and I, the more I sit through it, the more I understand, but the slide you have that shows what, you had mentioned the eight times, and then there's twenty-one different people that they talk to, you know, and you're trying to reduce the, the stress, to reduce the repeats of the A C, A C.
Aces. Adverse childhood experience.
Yeah, so, uh, reducing the toxic stress, then you're able to, to reduce the number, that number, and that's, but that's, for me, that's been the whole thing that I, that I took away from it. If you can bring, you bring that number down, and it's easy to see if you just process it, you bring that number down for those children and the families, and it's, it's the, the impact, you measure it emotionally, you measure spiritually, you measure it dollar wise, you measure it, however you want to measure it, but it's going to be positive. When you drop those A Cs, um, it's going to be really good to reduce that stress.
When we showed it to the district court and superior court judges, Judge Scott said, "You know, that's not manly, pamby stuff, that's science." And that's, he's right, the, the research tells you that those children will experience fewer, and adults, health issues, behavioral health issues, they'll be more successful in school and work. So I would say to you, thank you for the opportunity to work on these projects, it's a real honor.
It's a real impact on the community, too. I think that's one of the things that, we get so busy doing it, to stop to think about the long-term impact, and it's just going to be phenomenal.
All righty, ladies and gentlemen, we've got about five after one, I think, many of us have commitments, any two in front would be there at one-thirty, so I would, uh, go on my way to close up for the day, or if I squeeze one more in, I'd say probably just close up, give us a minute to catch our breath. Should go there, bud. Well, thank you, any questions, any ladies, any, we have some extra questions, if anyone can. So thank y'all for being here, guys.
Isn't the best work we'll ever have?